Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Statesville Planning Board meeting. We have a pretty packed agenda tonight. We're going to first start out with our normal approval of the minutes from our last meeting from July 22nd.
Motion to be accepted as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All right. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is going to be the introduction of our new planning board members. To my right, we have Darren Rucker and is our other planning board member here this evening?
Yeah, we have Cory Sloan. Is he in the audience? Cory Sloan may be in the other room, but I think all of you know Cory. And then we have Darren Rucker sitting beside of you. Roger Baycheck and Mark Tartt were also reappointed to their terms.
And then we can move on to the election of officers next. All right.
I nominate Alicia for president.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We also need to elect our vice chair.
Nominate Bernard Robertson.
Second.
All right. We have a nomination and a second. All in favor Bernard Robertson for vice chair. Say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations Bernard.
You as well.
All right. The next item on our agenda is going to be ZC 25-13 for the Compass Data Center. This is a courtesy hearing for rezoning application filed by Mr. Brett Collard for properties located on Stamy Farm Road between I-40 and US-70 Hickory Highway. This is to rezone it from Iredell County Residential Agriculture District and Iredell County Highway Business District to City of Statesville Light Industrial Conditional zoning.
Thank you Chairwoman and planning board members. This is a courtesy hearing for the rezoning. As the chairman stated, this is currently zoned Iredell County Residential Agricultural District and some highway business, Iredell County Highway Business located at that interchange that want to rezone to the City of Statesville LICZ. And what that means is it's our light industrial conditional zoning district and I'll explain that a little more in my presentation. So one of the clarifications we did want to make is that Compass Data Centers is not the same company that applied and withdrew their request from the town of Mooresville. Some of that was actually out in some information. Just want to clarify for the record that that is not the same company. This request basically is to rezone 350 acres. It includes the Stamy Farm and altogether there's about eight parcels. The property that's not included would be the triangle shown with the red X right here. That will actually be subdivided out. It's across US-70. They're proposing five warehouse buildings, about 275,000 square feet each. They'll have backup generators and fans for cooling. As part of their conditional request, our LI district allows numerous industrial uses, which they are offering a condition to limit it to warehouses, mini warehouses, public utilities, a temporary batch plant that's for construction if it's approved, also outdoor storage as an accessory use that does have to be screened if allowed, general office parking and parks and playgrounds. So if it's not one of these uses, it would not be permitted with the rezoning. These are just some pictures showing you what the view from US-70 Hickory Highway is on the left-hand side. And then you see the view from Stamy Farm. This is across from Origin Foods on Stamy Farm Road. When we also look at a rezoning, we look at the surrounding land uses. And so if you're familiar with this area north of the site, of course you have Interstate 40. You do have some Iredell County Residential Agricultural. There's some large tracts of land to the north. You also have some Iredell County GB, General Business, which includes premier portable buildings. That includes U-Haul rentals. You have Ellenburg Wicker Furniture at that interchange. Iredell County also has some heavy manufacturing. They call it their M2 district and that's the Penske Truck Rental. Iredell County also has some R-20 single-family residential in this area and that's the Gilbert Road neighborhood. If you look up on the map where Gilbert Road is, kind of up to the north of the site. As we're coming around east of the site is our Iredell County Residential Agricultural again. That's single-family homes and some vacant tracts. Also you have the Ashbrook Park neighborhood and you see the main road up on the map, Ashbrook Road. There are also Iredell County General Business at the intersection of Stamy Farm and US-70 and that's the Hunt Lumber Company. As you travel further south around this site, you do have Residential Agricultural again. That's the county. There's again a lot of single-family homes and large tracts of homes. You also have some City Estatesful RA that has single-family homes and large tracts. There's also some B5 kind of located in that intersection of Stamy Farm Road and US-70. It's currently vacant, but it is zoned for commercial. And then a little further south, you do have the City of Statesville Airport. As we go west to the site, it is Iredell County again, Residential Agricultural. There's large tracts of land. On this particular parcel, see if I can get the mouse to get up there to it. This parcel here, the Iredell County back in 2017 approved a special use permit for off-road riding park. Then Iredell County issued another special use permit in 2023 for land clearing and an inert debris landfill at this location. So just looking at those surrounding land uses and zoning districts. We first started out looking at this area back in 20, probably 2017, 2018 before we adopted our 2019 Mobility and Development Plan. We looked at this Stamy Farm Road area at I-40 and adopted two concepts. Concept A at the top of your screen basically has retail and single-family to the north of the interchange. And then it has mixed use, which would include residential and commercial and manufacturing and some single-family south of that interchange. This request kind of goes more with concept B, which changes and allows retail and single-family again to the north. That's about the same, but it allows a lot more manufacturing and some single-family to the south. So we adopted our land development plan after our mobility plan and we just coordinated and followed through with what the mobility plan projected for this area. And it was given two options with the retail and the industrial that I talked about with the mobility plan. So our land development plan does call for this property to be employment center, industrial flex space, or an activity center. And both of these include manufacturing, logistics, retail, and some residential as further back you come from the interchange. It is in our tier-two growth area. That's our next area besides tier-one being inner-city that we expect to grow. And that's typically because there's utilities out here. You do have Energy United Water, access to city water. City Sewer is in the planning stages and Duke Energy also planning stages for the substation. One of the things I want to note is it's not only the city's land use plan and mobility plan that we look at, we also looked at Iredell County. So currently, whether the city approves this or annexes the property, it's currently in Iredell County's plan to also be employment center, industrial flex. So they're basically calling for the same thing that the city is at this location. So what your staff does is we take these requests and we look at the city's adopted plans and basically give you an overview of the case to let you know if it's in compliance with the city's adopted plans. So that's what you'll see through this presentation. One of the things I mentioned earlier is that it's a conditional rezoning. And that means that this board and city council can place additional reasonable conditions to this request if so desired. Now the applicant has to agree to those conditions. But the applicant has already offered up three conditions as part of their application. They have limited the uses and I said those earlier. So you see those up there, the data center warehouse, mini warehouse, public utilities, the temporary batch plant, outdoor storage as an accessory use, general office parking and parks and playgrounds. They also are not required to do a traffic impact analysis based on their average daily trips, but they did agree to perform a TIA. So that is a condition. Also, we require 30-foot buffers adjacent to residential properties and they have agreed to increase that buffer from 30 to 50 feet for those three, those four parcels shown. And I'll show those on a map a little bit later because those are existing residences that are above the site. What you have up on the screen is the site plan and I'll try to zoom in a little bit in the next couple of slides, but did want to point out the orange structures are basically the five warehouse buildings. There are approximately 270,000 square feet each. They do have 40 backup generators per building. That's in case of a power outage. They do have fans for cooling. They did mention that at their neighborhood meeting that they do plan to use fans as their primary cooling method. They will also have to install a minimum of two stormwater ponds to detain and filter their runoff. They do propose a new substation that Duke Energy will provide the power and that's up this little gray box adjacent to the interstate. And then they do have a primary access is off Stamy Farm Road, close to the interchange. And I've indicated that in a circle. So you see I-40 and Stamy Farm Road. That's where the majority of employees and suppliers will access the site. They do have a secondary entrance down here on Hickory Highway, but that's supposed to be emergency entrance. So zoom in a little bit to tell you that on this concept plan, they do show their 30-foot buffers. It's shown in the green here along the sides of the property. I did circle one of the existing residents. It's the Monday property. This is where they increased the buffer from 30 to 50 feet. But I wanted to put up on their site plan, if you measure from the nearest building or the nearest backup generator, you'll see these arrows at that location of the Monday's property. Even though they have the 50-foot buffer, the nearest equipment is over 500 feet from the property line. And then you'll see as you go south, it's 350 feet from this property line, over 650 on the west side, 850 going up a little bit further north. Wanted to go down a little further. The other two circles would be the Jordan Nash property and Hare property. This is again where they increased the buffer from 30 to 50. And you'll see the nearest building or generator at this location is over 1,500 feet. At this location, it's over 2,500 feet. And staff feels like that that does help mitigate any light or noise concerns for the abutting property owners. And they are so, also are leaving this area as undeveloped except for the stormwater pond, stormwater ponds that you see up and the secondary access. And just to reference the Unified Development Code, that if this is recommended for approval by planning board or approved by council, you know landscaping plan, you saw the buffers, street trees, there's parking lot trees, all that has to be shown on the final site plan, all the species, the types of plantings that they're going to install. The 30-foot buffer is the city's largest buffer required. It's supposed to provide a high-density screening substantially to block visual contact between zoning districts if there are existing trees. And there are some out along this site. Those can be kept and we will count those as part of their landscaping. A lighting plan is also required at that final site plan approval. Lighting has to be located to not directly reflect on adjacent property or public streets in such a manner to adversely affect the enjoyment of adjacent property or endanger motorists traversing the public streets. And we do have this point two foot candles at the property lines in our code. Also, the use must meet our noise ordinance. We do have from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. a 70 dB A at the property line and from 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. a 65 dB A at the property line. They did have their required community meeting with the conditional zoning. We require them to have that extra meeting. So you have the neighborhood meeting, which they have to notify their abutting property owners, which they did that on August 14th. It was held at the Civic Center. They had over 60 attendees, mostly the abutter property owners, but they had other people show up too. And then we have of course the courtesy hearing tonight at the planning board. And then the third chance to have public input is September 15th. That city council required public hearing. You can, you have the report in your packet that they were required to submit. It had concerns including stormwater, smell, noise, farmland preservation district, lighting, birmingham, cooling, water usage, power usage, fuel for generators, employment, youth, youth engagement, whales, security, traffic and property values. So all those were questions that were brought up at that meeting. So we look at, does the request comply with our 2045 land development plan and our 2019 Mobility Plus Development Plan? And our mobility plan, as I showed you earlier, does project two different land use options for this area. This area is called our airport I-40 focus area. And I talked about concept A and concept B. This was more with concept B with more manufacturing and logistics south of that interchange. And we certainly feel, feel like a data center meets that. I won't read all of that, but you know, that was the mobility plan. And then when we started the 2045 land development plan, we just followed through and took the mobility plan into consideration and projected this with those two options as activity center or employment center. The county followed suit with updating their 2045 Horizon Plan. So all three of these plans for years have projected this area to be this, these two scenarios. In addition, the adopted plans referenced above, with the concept plan and the conditions offered by the applicant, they provide large buffers, they provide an expanse of undeveloped land between the proposed structures and the adjoining properties. The primary entrance is in close proximity to I-40 and the interchange and a data center is a less intensive use regarding traffic than a distribution center or retail development. So staff's recommendation based on our adopted plans, we do recommend approval of this request with upon, contingent upon annexation and with the conditions offered by the applicant. With the exception, we'd like to change the language in condition number two. Would rather have it say that driveway and road improvements agreed to by the city and DOT per the TIA will be required by developer at time of site plan approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions for you. In your packet, you also have your drafted consistency statement if you want to recommend approval. You also have your draft consistency statement if you want to recommend unfavorable recommendation. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sherry, do the building setbacks and buffering apply to the substation? How is that handled?
Yeah, well, the substation, they will have to meet our setbacks. Now buffering is a little different when you're buffering utilities. We definitely want to do our due diligence to see if we can get that. I drove along I-40 and there is, there is some stands of trees in the right-of-way for I-40 that will act as a buffer for that substation. So, but we, we don't require that, but we will ask them to, to provide that if it's possible because it is a public utility.
Anybody else have any questions for planning staff? No? Well, if no one has any more questions, we will open up the public hearing. What we're going to do this evening is we had the sign-up sheet. So we're just going to go down in the order that you signed up in. We're limited to three minutes. You'll be able to see that on the clock over there. Once your three minutes is up, we ask that you let the next person speak. Also, if you have something you need to say that's been repeated multiple times, you can yield your time to the next person. We do ask when you come up to speak, you'll come up to the microphone, say your name and your address if you're a city resident and if you are an adjoining property owner. So we will get started. Can we have Pam Ford come up?
Thanks for having me. My name is Pam Ford and I live at 361 Duck Creek Road in Troutman. I'm not a city resident nor... I'm not a city resident nor an abutting neighbor. I'm here as an Iredell County resident, and I would like to read a letter to you that I wrote, some words down. Dear Planning Board members, please deny the request for annexation of the Stamy Farm property aimed to be used for construction of a data center. I do not believe that Statesville nor Iredell County are prepared to host such an entity. There are many reasons related to the data center to deny this annexation, additional noise and light pollution, current limit of public services such as fire and rescue, heightened amount of water and air contamination, negative impact on property value, added dangers to air traffic at the airport due to heat rise from the buildings, construction disruptions, very few community benefits, aesthetic concerns, as well as astronomical water and energy consumption. And explaining that last statement, 500 megawatts is a measure of power representing 500 million watts. It's a rate of energy, it, sorry, this is a rate at which energy is produced or consumed at a given moment rather than the total amount of energy. This capacity can power an average of 316,805 homes for a year, for a year. Of course, this is dependent upon their usage, but it's still a huge number. 500 megawatts could power all of the homes in our neighboring city of Charlotte or another city of similar size in Minneapolis, Minnesota. To figure that a different way, 500 megawatts can potentially power 1.2 million homes for one hour. 500 megawatts could power LA, New York City, or Chicago for one hour, all of the homes. So with that being said, I ask you, are we ready for that? Is Iredell County ready for that? Is Stamy Farm Road property ready for that? My question is, can our power, current power grid survive that? I'm not sure it could even begin to provide that, based on the recent asks from Duke Power raised, to raise our air conditioning temperatures, limit our time using devices, or other items that need power to operate. I have several of these requests printed and would like to give them to you. They date back to 2022. And please, I implore each of you on the board, do some research, visit currently operational data centers, and wisely turn down the annexation of the Stamy Farm property for this type of use. Thank you. Can I give these to?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah.
To who?
You can hand them right down here, and we'll pass them down. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have the developer speak on behalf of the project.
I'm with Compass Data Centers. I have the privilege of leading community relations, so I work closely with all of our campus communities and get to represent this company, which I've grown to, to love. I came to know Compass in 2020 as a contractor. I had my own communications consultancy, which I loved and didn't plan to leave, but when Compass came along, I knew this was the right move. I've admired and been impressed by Compass for years for the sustainability initiatives, the innovation, and the, and the efforts that we as a private company are uniquely able to pioneer with respect to sustainability and quality operations. Before I get going much further, I was here on August 14th for the meeting with our neighbors, and I wanted to just quickly hit on a couple of points that came up consistently and repeatedly. One was water, and I just want to make it very clear that we don't use water. Since the founding of our company in 2011 by Chris Crosby, who's still our CEO today, he knew that evaporative cooling wasn't for us, that that volume of water was just not a responsible way to operate a data center. So since our founding, we've used airside cooling, no water. Second is power. Power is a big concern, and I understand that. It is a lot of power. Duke has assured us that there is enough power to power the 200 megawatts of IT load, 330 megawatts of total power capacity over time. That will be a gradually growing requirement. Sound. We have always and will always comply with city and county ordinances. So at night, that's, we, we have scoped for 55 dB A, which is comparable to a dishwasher running in another room. During the day, the sound profile is 65 dB A, which is comparable to an air conditioner at approximately 100 feet away. Another question that came up a lot during our meeting on August 14th was light. Interestingly, I had never been challenged on that in my five years working with Compass, so I got the chance to look into that and understand that we will be using downcast light. I think it's important to understand that there isn't work activity happening outside at night, so we don't have a need for stadium-style lighting. It's downcast light that sits on the secure perimeter. And then EMFs was another question that came up on the 14th, electromagnetic frequencies. That was another comment I had not previously heard, and I got to go research and learn something new, which I always love. And low and behold, the computer equipment would suffer if there were EMFs. So we do a lot of studies during our due diligence phase to make sure that our employees and the equipment housed within the data center are safe. So I just wanted to make that known and also let you know that generators are rarely required to run for backup power, and our generators are fueled with HVO fuel, hydrogenated vegetable oil with, which is a renewable fuel that burns about 70% cleaner than traditional diesel. So I just wanted to call those couple of key points out because they had been matters of concern for the community, and I, and I just wanted to really reiterate that. I'll share a little bit about our company and then let my colleague Brett talk about the project. What is a data center and why do we need it? A data center is a secure facility that houses computer systems, servers, and equipments used to store, process, and distribute digital information. So it's the internet. It's the apps that you use, it's your social media, it's, it's our, our business applications, our banking, all day long, virtually, for better or worse, we're, we're sort of connected to our smartphones and using the internet. Why is it important to support digital infrastructure? It's important to support digital infrastructure done right. We want to do this responsibly and considerately. Data centers are needed for our country to stay ahead in national security, to stay ahead in the AI race, to set the standards for artificial intelligence so that our adversaries aren't calling the shots on that. A little bit about Compass. We are a proven developer with operations around the globe. Most of our assets are in the U.S. You can see them on the map here. But the point I want to make is that we are not, we're not new to this. We've been around for 15 years. We do what we say we're going to do, and we do it with great care. A little bit more about our company, because we're not necessarily a household name, we are backed by two of the world's largest investors, Ontario Teachers Pension Plan and Brookfield Infrastructure Partners. Between them, they have approximately $1 trillion in assets under management. So strong company. Sustainability has been at the forefront of what we do for as long as we've existed. Our CEO really believes in, our company believes in, building 100-year assets. And what that means is, we're not building something that's here for the short term that we're going to turn around and tear down. We want this to be a long-lived, large-scale, high-value asset to the community. So we build formidably, and we make forward-looking decisions. We are not bidding out to the lowest-cost bidder to build a cheap building. We're building a quality building to last. And of growth, because of our successful strategy, we have grown tremendously in the past few years. We just, a couple weeks ago, were named the Ink Magazine's fastest-growing list. We, we broke that 1,000 seal that we've been under for, over for a while, and we're at, I think, 982. So we consistently win awards for our fast growth and for being a best place to work and for sustainability initiatives that we pioneer. Our buildings, Sherry covered it, I won't belabor it. They're large modular buildings. We use modular designs because it helps us build a better building faster, more formidably, and safer. Outside the buildings, we have created large equipment yards so that our buildings can change with the times. As newer, better power centers, cooling systems come along, we're able to plug and play and do what's right for the community, do what's right for our customer. Cooling, as I said earlier, we have always used water-free cooling systems. We will soon launch with our, our partner, Vertiv, we've created a hybrid cooling system so that we can be responsive to AI. That is a closed-loop chiller with a water-based liquid, a water, water as the liquid. And then within each of the data halls is the heart of the data center, and that's where all the servers live. So each data hall is, is lined with rows and racks of servers. A little bit about our kit of parts, and really what I want you to understand here is that we have worked with these same four companies since our founding. Again, we don't, we don't have a procurement function, we have an innovation function. As a company, we're committed to staying in relationships with these companies and innovating with them to better serve our customers, build a better data center, and be a better community member. So Schneider Electric provides our power centers, they have since our founding. Vertiv, I mentioned earlier, we are constantly innovating with them, doing what's right, making a better cooling system. Cummins has provided our backup generators, again, since our inception. Siemens is the exception. We added them as a partner two years ago to advance medium voltage switchgear, so coming from the substation into the data center. A little bit about how we build, we really focus on site improvement. We're a bit unique in the industry for maximizing open space. So what is being proposed here essentially leaves 40% of the property as open space. We think that that's, that's very important for the aesthetic and for the comfort of our neighbors. Water efficiency, as I've said now for the third time, we are purely air-cooled to this point. We're working, we're introducing a hybrid system. We also, with respect to water, the stormwater drainage systems that we will build into the system are natural irrigation systems lined with carefully selected plants that act as a natural filtration system for stormwater. So moving from an agricultural to an industrial purpose in this case actually returns more cleaner water to the aquifer. With respect to energy and the atmosphere, we focused very acutely on cement. It's a, it's a massive, the production of cement is a massive greenhouse gas, source of greenhouse gas emissions. So we start there. And one of my first projects in 2020 was working with the innovation team as they adopted and made a consistent use of carbon cure technology across all of our campuses, which is really cool. So in the process of manufacturing cement, they capture that greenhouse gas, mineralize it, and sequester it in the concrete. All of our campuses are built with carbon cure concrete. We also use Concrete AI so that we can source local aggregate so that we're not creating more concrete, more cement, I mix those up a lot, than we have to, and we're using local source to, to have less shipping harm. As Sherry mentioned, we're, will be proposing to use an onsite batch plant. The purpose of that is to keep trucks off the road, create safer roadways, minimize wear and tear to the road. Sarnafil roofing, it's a more expensive product, but it lasts for 40 years. So again, we're not having to create that roofing material. We really focus on avoiding emissions, and that's one really cool way that we can do it. Similarly, with polymer fiber in place of steel rebar, we avoid emissions. I talked about the HVO fuels. I'm almost done. I know I'm talking fast, forgive me, but I, I want to make sure we have, Brett, you get to hear from Brett. Something that's interesting about the modular way that we build, so 75% of our building is manufactured off-site. That means the pieces and parts come together on-site. That off-site manufacturing environment has been a boon to bringing diversity into construction. So with that, in that off-site manufacturing environment, you've got predictable commutes, predictable work hours, climate control, good supervision, machine-aided technology. And so more women are coming into construction through that off-site manufacturing dynamic, and we've been able to, to bring more women to our sites. So all of our construction managers today are females, and that's something that we're really proud of. Last slide, Compass in the community. Again, in my introduction, I said, you know, I'm, I'm fortunate to be the, the lead for community relations, and so we like to get to know our, get to know our neighbors, get to know what they value and how that aligns with our values as we start to invest in communities. Another thing that's really cool about our large-scale campuses is that we don't have a million of them all over the U.S. We have a few of them, so we really get to know our neighbors. I plucked off one community here because there are some really fresh things that we've just completed. In May, we launched the larger picture there is the launch of our program with Texas State Technical College. We've worked with them over the past year to develop a data center operator curriculum. We call it the My Data Center Pathway Program, Mechanical, Electrical, and Information Technology. So we spent about a year putting the program together. We launched it in May. The first cohort, cohort of students started in August. We scholarshiped all of them, and we're just excited to see where that goes because this, this industry is dying for workforce. There are so many opportunities for good-paying jobs, and we're excited to see our neighbors get, get involved. So that's something we're super excited about, and that's often running. For back-to-school, we got to sponsor the back-to-school teacher convocation at Red Oak ISD. That was a lot of fun. I wish I could start every Monday like that. Big pep rally for teachers. We, we helped with project graduation, we gave out 12 laptops, we sponsored golf tournaments. So those are just some of the ways that we are involved in one community, and I would love to talk about more, but I've taken up too much of your time. Thank you for having us. Thank you for listening.
Could I, could I ask a quick question before you finish?
Yes, sir, please.
How much tax revenue will this center bring to Statesville?
I would be inclined to ask the city what numbers they have run. This project will represent between our investment in the buildings and the equipment to operate them, and the customer's investment in IT equipment will be in excess of $1 billion, with a B.
Say B. Wow.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Brett Callard. I'm the Senior Vice President of Land Development for Compass Data Centers. I lead the team based out of our headquarters in Dallas, Texas. We're very excited about this opportunity. This gives us a, an opportunity to develop in one of the burgeoning tier-one markets for hyperscale data center development. The proximity between Northern Virginia, which is the, the epicenter of data centers, as well as Atlanta, another growing tier-one market, provides a gateway for network latency that supports continued hyperscale growth in the region. The diverse workforce with many prestigious universities, community colleges in the area really provide a, a real strong labor force for our company to come in and establish our, our first, our first hyperscale campus in North Carolina. This site is 340 acres. It's right along the I-40 frontage road, which is also a critical infrastructure point for our company because it does have that long-haul fiber connectivity that we, as a data center, seek for our customers. There's a large Duke Power, Duke Energy Transmission Substation just across I-40, which will support our campus, and that has upwards to 500 megawatts of total capacity on that substation, which is why it was so attractive to us. The proximity to that, as well as the, the adjacent high-voltage power lines, make this an ideal data center campus for hyperscale developers. This, this site will have, this site will have approximately 200 acres of, of developable land. You know, we're going to get, we're going to make sure that there's over 130 acres of open space throughout the campus, notably with a significant buffer and continued landscape along the Highway 70 to the south of the campus. You know, again, I, I don't want to go too far into what Sherry has already discussed, but we are very excited for this opportunity, and we look forward to a, a very fulsome opportunity with the city of Statesville and Iredell County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll be continuing. Something I do want to put out, point out is there is quite a few people downstairs, and some of them are signed up to speak. So if you-
Okay. We'll be continuing. Something I do want to put out, point out is there is quite a few people downstairs, and some of them are signed up to speak. So if you speak and want to let them come and take your place so that they're able to talk, you can watch from downstairs. Next, we have Gordon Moore. Can you please come up to the front? State your address if you're a city resident and if you're an adjoining property owner.
Good evening. My name's Gordon Moore. I live at 322 Gilbert Road, Statesville. And just want to point out for the Planning Director, Gilbert Road's to the east of Stamy Farm, not to the north. Ironically enough, I'm from Northern Virginia. Nice little presentation you all put down. And having been a native of that area until 22 years ago, when we left the urban sprawl of that area, I've heard quite a bit about these data centers. The 65 to 75 dBA is a pipe dream. They run at about 75 dBA at all times. If the backup generators run, they can go to as much as 110 decibels as measured. That is possible. There's been numerous fires with these centers across the country. I believe there's one in Texas that's burning now as we speak. There are lithium batteries in these centers. Not sure what many of you may know or not know about lithium batteries. Lithium batteries can explode. They're dangerous if left unattended. So we're going to put 275,000 square-foot buildings, five of them with 200 generators, lithium batteries, 500 feet away, 500 feet away from residential areas. I'm a half a mile east of there. Think about what the impact would be of a fire at this place. We don't have a fire department that's trained for this. And Duke Power, we couldn't even get them to shut the power off to the Tesla charger that burned in the Walmart parking lot. Took an hour and a half to do that. So I mean, these are not invalid concerns. And the one thing I also would like to state is that I find the local ordinance of the next-door neighbors to said properties being notified and not the neighbors of the area, especially on a project like this, within two to five miles away, to not be notified? That law needs to be addressed immediately. And I realize that's beyond your commission here, but I do want to go on record at this meeting for that. I look around, you know, one year ago, we were here with you. And now we're going to have 525 homes of briar wood in our backyard thanks to the Stamis. And now they want to leave this legacy for their father and their family, where their father died on this farm as a data center, as a data center, all to get the water and sewer out from the city. We don't even have an ETJ sitting here. That's who's supposed to represent us on this board. We don't even have an ETJ. Is that not a valid position? That's who's supposed to represent us. These are things that you should really take in consideration. This is not going to be a local job creator. This is going to be a temporary job creator, and these jobs are going to go back to Texas. And the people that are brought in to run this are not going to be from here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Tony Henderson?
Tony Henderson, 104 Comanche Court, Statesville, North Carolina. I am not within the city limits. I'm not an immediate neighbor, but I'm about two and a half miles away. I'm a 1979 graduate of West Iredale High School, so I'm from the area. Upon graduation, I went to Georgia Tech, got a degree in engineering on an Air Force ROTC scholarship. I also got a master's in engineering from St. Mary's and a master's in strategic policy from the Air War College. In my 27 years of Air Force service, I retired as a full colonel. I had assignments all over this country and in Europe. I was a squadron commander three times, a group commander one time at three major air commands, and twice at the Pentagon, including 9/11. I say this to kind of set my background in that I'm going to try to talk logically from both a local and a nation and a world perspective. When I retired from the Air Force, I came home, and I bought River Oaks Golf Course. And it was a goat track at the time. And my goal was to make that an anchor for West Iredale, the most beautiful 168 acres in the western part of the county. And after 15 years, I've done that. I'm two and a half miles away from the proposed data center, and I wholeheartedly support it. What they're doing is important for us as individuals, for this county, for the nation, and indeed for the world. Every one of us have a cellphone in our back pocket, a computer on our desk, Netflix, Hulu, every app you can imagine. They all take AI, they all take data. From a commercial standpoint, every business relies on it for growth, for development. Our country's economy counts on it. From a safety standpoint, air traffic control, ship control, and the soon-to-come autonomous vehicle control all require this. It has to go someplace. But what I want to speak on is national security. Now, I'm speaking as an individual. I'm not speaking as a former Air Force Colonel, but that's where my background comes from. I have no affiliation with the government. But just this week, the Air Force and Navy did combined operations using AI-driven air battle management with F-16s, F-35s, and F-18s. Precision. It cut pilot error down to next to nothing, took decision time down from minutes to seconds. Every Navy weapon system uses AI. Every Army advanced system uses AI. We are currently developing the sixth-generation fighter that's going to use AI. We have to have this ability. To me, the most important thing, our main adversaries, China and Russia, hypersonic weapons, we've all heard of them. We have no answer for those right now. AI gives us an answer. Intercepting a hypersonic weapon is like driving down the interstate at 70 miles an hour, bending out your car window and trying to pick up a dime. We don't have the ability for that. AI gives us that ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tim and Sheila Schuford?
Good evening. My name is Sheila Schuford. My husband is Tim. We live at 128 Mount Herman Road, Statesville, North Carolina. I'm not in the city. I have never, ever spoken in anything to this manner in my life, but I'm a nurse of 37 years. And I do know that data centers are inevitable. But what concerns me most is the placement of this data center in the middle of our small community where we're within two to three schools, where children will be outside playing. We have West Iredale Middle School. We have West Iredale High School. We also have Celeste Elementary. I have spent my life educating people on health problems. We live in an area where we have a large population of COPD, asthma. These generators that Compass talks about, they are still diesel-powered. They do still put off soot into our air. They do still amplify respiratory illness, cancer. There's all kinds. We've already touched on noise pollution. I'm not going to go over what other people have already said. But my big concern is that my grandchildren get to grow up in an environment where they can run outside and play and not have to worry about the air that they breathe. They have to be consciously morally responsible. And they can sit up here for at least 13 minutes. I don't get the opportunity to talk for 13 minutes. But I do get to say how important it is that they are responsible, and they can say what they're going to do, but the data shows differently, y'all. I have statistics, just one that I'd like to mention, that by the year 2030, y'all, that's five years away, that we will have data centers contributing to over 600,000 additional cases of asthma related to these increase in the symptoms from what they breathe from these centers that we're around. We already know that we're a hotspot for thyroid cancer. We've been studied in this area, and I have data that I can share with the board if you'd like to see it, that they have been looking at cancers. We know that all of the electrical equipment, the data station or the substation that they call, all those things are going to be very near people living that have grown up in this community. There's got to be a better place for it than in the middle of communities with three schools surrounding this area. So I ask you, and you don't have to answer it out loud, but ponder if this was coming in your backyard or in your neighborhood, and you had to decide what noise you had to listen to, or the lights, or the air that you breathe, whether it was going to be safe enough for you or not, or your family, your loved ones. So consider that when you vote on this, whether or not you would want what we're being asked to come into our community. Thank you for your consideration, and I ask that you really, really dig deep and think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill, if you could state your address, if you're a city resident and if you're an adjoining property owner.
Yes, Bill McCombs. I live in Mooresville, but our McCombs Steel Company is located at 117 Slingshot Road, which is approximately two and a half miles from here, from your site facility. You know, I fully support the annexation, and the reason being, there's, you got to understand what they're going to bring tax revenue to this community to change schools, roads, infrastructure, maybe lower the tax base. Something's going in this community, right? Do we want 500 homes? Do we want an Amazon with trucks coming in and out of it all the time? Or do you want one of the most low-impactful facilities that doesn't have that much impact on the community? And just got to think about the tax revenue that's bringing in for the city. That's it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Tucker?
Good afternoon. My name's Jeff Tucker, lifetime resident of West Iredale. I live 211 Ashbrook. My grandma's farm, it was Cook Road when we grew up. I went to work for Stamis when I was 12 years old and worked for them through high school. Statesville, still live right there on Ashbrook. You take the city of Statesville, and you take, come out west, and you come to Stamy Farm, you come to Sharon's, Old Mountain Road and Sharon's School. That's the nucleus of the county once you get away from Mooresville. Take Mooresville out of the equation. That's the nucleus of the whole county, always has been. It's quiet, rural setting. She just touched on this proposed site's within a mile of Celeste, West Middle, West High, that the system, that the electrical system sits right there at West Iredale. So what's proposed here, I grew up thinking this is going to be agriculture, and what's proposed here is massive. This is just a steroid beast of what we thought we was going to get. So y'all are pushing this through, and I've talked to some of the county commission, I mean, not county commission, but talked to some people. And this is going through just like a regular rezoning. But what I want y'all to understand, this ain't a regular rezoning. Y'all are going to change the complexity and the way the county looks with this coming in. It's going to change it forever. Now, so with that said, the concerns that's been brought up here tonight, I would like to see a full report from the other data centers that's in the corner and that's already in the country so we can see what we're going to get. We don't want a pig in a sack right here, and we don't know. They don't even know who the tenant's going to be. They couldn't tell. It's nothing other than everything's going to be good. We want to see some reports on the data centers that's out there. We deserve full disclosure before any approval, before y'all done. Y'all need to look at that, and y'all need to make us aware. Me personally, most of the people in here. I don't pay city tax. I don't get to vote for city council. And yet y'all are coming out and making decisions. It's going to affect all of us for the rest of our lives. So I want to request right here on record, I want to request on record that this be moved to a joint planning session with the county board, with the county planning, along with the city planning, with the county commission, with the city commission, because this ain't your normal stuff. This is going to change the complexity of this county forever, and it needs to be the county decision from we, the people, not county politics as usual. So I would like for just for y'all to have an open heart and to pay close attention and listen to the truth of what's getting ready to come, because we're going to have to live with it forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jonathan Griffin.
I'm Jonathan Griffin. I live at 178 Black Road in Statesville. That's off of Celeste Gifola, off Old Mountain Road, not in the city. And I have been a lifelong resident of Iredale County. I have a law practice here in Statesville. Been here about 24 years. I do want to make it clear, I do not represent the Stamis in any way or Compass. I know I'm here as a citizen and a resident of West Iredale. I do support the proposal to rezone it. I think in my research, when I first heard about this a few weeks ago, took an interest in it because it affects the area that I live in. I'll be driving by. I drive down 70 to work every day. And I got to looking at it. It is a big facility, but from what I understand, and I would encourage everyone to continue to do their research on this, but don't necessarily get your information from just particular groups that have a particular agenda. You need to dig into it and look for yourself and do the research. I believe Compass Data Center is to be a kind of a world-class organization. They've got international facilities. They've got facilities here in the United States. And I think one of the things that appeals to me is we know what we're getting. It's not, they're not just going to, it's not going to some developer who can just sell it to anybody. We know what we're getting, and we can research that. We're getting a data center. They store data. I don't normally get involved in Iredale County politics and the local politics. I kind of have stayed out of that. But as I understand it, this is going to be potentially the biggest investment in our county, in our county's history. And that's significant and needs to be looked into. I believe there's a significant opportunity for tax revenues that are going to help our roads, our schools, our parks, other services. And so it's not to be taken lightly, but as I look into it, I believe this is a significant opportunity for Iredale County from a tax revenue basis. That's not to ignore the impacts. Anytime something like this is coming in, people need to take a look, a look, a strong look at it. But I believe that the benefits far outweigh any potential problems. I don't believe, I've not seen any real evidence of the pollution and things that you hear from others. It stores data. It's got a, it's not going to tax the water system, the way they do their cooling. We can support it. I believe Duke Energy says we can support it. And I believe that it's already been projected to be industry by the county's Horizon 2045 Plan and the city's land development plan. So I believe our leaders have already projected this, and I believe it fits within the plan.
Sir, you need to terminate your remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Thomas Hamel. Has he been able to get upstairs? We're going to go to the next person while we wait on Mr. Hamel. Next up, we have John Galena.
First of all, thank you all for being here and for patiently hearing certainly everybody's opinions, and I know that they're vast. I had a prepared statement, and I want to first think a little bit about the history of our community. And certainly, as a lifelong resident, I live at 104 Galax Drive in Statesville, North Carolina. And I'm not in the city limits. I do have a vested interest in the city, as I do have. as I do have a charity here in the community. And my kids go to school here in the community. And, you know, one of the things that I oftentimes think about is the importance of having job opportunities for our children to stay here. And I would beg to say that none of you want to see your children or grandchildren have to get a decent-paying job by going to Charlotte, or Mooresville, or some other surrounding city. And so what Compass offers is the opportunity to start creating higher-paying jobs. As a general contractor, we often hear about affordable housing, but we fail to think about the other side of the equation. It's not just about driving prices down. It's about increasing wages to make affordable housing available. And the other side of the equation for the Stameys that I hear constantly, and it just, it makes me so angry to hear this, and this idea that a landowner is wrong to sell their property. That is a part of their bundle of rights, that they get to choose within the law what they can do with that property. And this plan is in alignment with what our elected officials put on the table for our Horizon Plan and for the planned future use of this property. I'm fully supportive of this opportunity and believe that economically, it's good for our community. It's going to offer the potential for job creation, not just in the tech industry, but it's also going to offer the opportunity for higher education through Mitchell Community College. It's going to offer construction jobs, and it's going to be the lowest impact for our community from a traffic standpoint and so many other issues. I can completely understand. I live within the airport's radius of their takeoff and landing, so I understand the sense of jets taking off and the sound and the noise disruption. We're already hearing that. We're not going to take that away. We're not going to create affordable housing in that property right in the takeoff path of the Statesville Airport. This is a great potential use. That's why it was designated for the zoning that it was and the future plan as we made the extension of the airport runway. Statesville has already made significant investment into this community for this purpose. And I urge you to continue down the course and follow that plan. It's good for our community, good for our tax base, and it's going to be good for the future of our kids. We're called the city of progress. It's time that we start making those forward steps and making progress to create jobs and opportunity for our future. I thank you so much for your time. What you do, I know it's not easy to be sitting behind this podium and be able to hear both sides of the equation. But thank you for doing that and doing your civic duty to help our city grow. I hope you all have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Galena. And I believe Thomas Hamel was able to come up from downstairs.
Hello, my name's Thomas Hamel. I live on Kentwood Road. I'm just within a couple of miles of this. My son goes to West Middle. So, you know, there's all the things. They've talked about air quality. But I think what a lot of people are missing here is the security aspect. You have the batteries, of course, with the smoke and the fire and all that problem. But, you know, we've got a lot of people in this country right now. We don't know who they are, and they've already told us we have terrorists here. And you're wanting to build a big bomb right by a bunch of schools and by a bunch of residential areas. And what if somebody hits this place? What's the security on it? And I've heard all the talk about, you know, all the good stuff, but who's securing this place? What's that going to be like? We're going to have troops setting up there? We're going to have police, FBI? What's going to go on with that? Because it has to be secure. You can't just set something like this out by a community and not secure it. And I don't mean some little guy in a security car riding around with a flashlight. I mean, this is serious business here. I mean, you know, it may sound funny, but it's really not. I lived down here. If that thing catches fire, where am I going to go? I just got my house paid for, and y'all going to put this down here? And if a fire breaks out, what are you going to do about it? I mean, really, what's, somebody answer that. What are you going to do if this place catches on fire? Nobody has an answer for that. The West Aridale Fire Department ain't going to be able to put it out. They're not going to be able to put it out. So who's going to put it out? You guys going to come up here to pass this stuff? You going to go up there and dump buckets of water on it? What are you going to do? What are you going to do about all the traffic it's going to cause? Already, if there's a wreck on 40, I can't hardly get out of my road because all that traffic comes down 70, Hickory Highway. And y'all going to create more traffic. And it's the same old problem in Iredale County. Y'all build up stuff and you don't fix the roads. That's the last thing you think about. And you got a bunch of traffic jam going on. And who's getting these jobs? I guarantee it's not any blue-collar workers around here. I doubt anybody from around here gets hired to work there. So answer some real questions, some hard questions. Who's going to put out the fire? Who's going to secure this place? And who's going to guarantee me that my air is not going, air quality is not going to go down? I already have problems breathing as it is. So, you know, this seems really irresponsible to me. And then we're here in the city council. This is a county thing. This is county land, not city. Why am I even standing here? You know, and I've heard from a little bird that there's already been money paid to Duke Power for the substation. $21 million. Does that sound familiar to any of y'all? Why has that money done been paid? Somebody's getting their pockets lined here, and it don't feel right to me. This is going over like a fart in church. We ain't having it. Do not pass this. Do not do this. Are you going to have to hear my mouth more? Because I'm not having, this is retarded. It's just, it's really retarded. I've heard a lot of people get up here and say a lot of pretty nice things, but none of it meant anything. None of it. So you guys have a wonderful day. Please think with some common sense, and don't pass this. At least send it back to the county.
Yes, sir. Deidra Pickens? Ms. Pickens, if you could state your address, if you're a city resident and if you're an adjoining property owner.
Yes. My name is Deidra Pickens. I'm not a city resident, but I do own a business. I've had a small business in Statesville for 19 years come November. So I have a lot to do in the community. It means a lot to me. My address is 118 Parker's Grove Lane. So I am in the country. I am within a two-mile radius of Stamey Farm. We have heard a lot. We've heard a lot of promises about jobs and give back to community and schools, and a beautiful presentation about how you get people involved. That's all great, give back on your end, but what you're leaving us with is a whole lot of issues when it comes to power supply. Thank you. Noise and light pollution, air pollution, health concerns, and security. Once this land is turned over for this, when it's developed for a data center, it's irrevocably altered. There is no going back. And I hope that you guys really think long and hard about that. Any jobs that they propose? Well, we heard from Gordon earlier. They're not going to be from here. What are they going to train our people to do? This is a housing station that houses computer systems, related equipment for storing, processing, distributing large amounts of data. What is that going to do for us? AI, it's not a matter of wanting AI or not wanting AI. It's a matter of placement and where you're putting this. From my house, the beautiful sunsets that I have, the amount of light pollution that a data center creates, a sky glow, and look up these things. If you guys haven't heard about this, I feel like I am playing catch-up. I learned about this a week ago, and the amount of data that is out there that you can go and look at for yourself, please do that. I want my sunsets at night. I don't want to be outside and all I see is a glow from the upward emissions of the data center. My stepdad is down the road. I don't want him having any other health conditions as far as breathing goes. The schools, what about our schools and our kids? Just really stop and think about that. Because once this, once this change is over, guys, there's no going back. And these centers, they operate 24/7. There's no turnoff. It's up to us to take care of future generations. Thank you for your time.
John Michaels?
Hello, my name is John Michaels. I'm a Mooresville resident, but I just purchased property near this catastrophe, as I'm thinking of it. But anyway, before I say anything, I'd like you both, all of you, to turn around and look at that mural on the wall behind you. Just please do that. Take a good look at it. That is what we are representing. I don't see a data center there anywhere. This is not why people moved out here. It's just not. And I understand that there has to be growth. And why does it have to be here? He mentioned it. We've already put in all their infrastructure so they can build, and they can reap the benefits. I've looked up on AI all of the data centers that have been installed, and not one of them has done anything to benefit the community at all. Maybe it brought in tax revenue, and a lot of people made a lot of money at the top, but nothing for the residents. There's nothing there. You're going to put a playground in. Who's going to go to a playground next to a data center? It's just not going to happen. I mean, talk about this, you know, you make this. When you first started, I was listening to all of this very carefully because I just found out about it after I purchased my property. But all I could think of is the old saying, "You can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig, no matter what you do." And it's just, this is, you just make everything seem like it's just so nice. It's going to be a fairy tale. We've got to have all this data. Well, put it somewhere where you have to do the infrastructure to get the roads 100 miles away from where we need to be. Don't come because we put in all the roads, all of our taxes, all of our infrastructure is here, and then you say, "Oh, there's a nice place right there. It's right next to 40. We can get the airport real quick. We can bring our trucks in. We can get all of our supplies in here." It's just, this is just, it's just crazy. I mean, please, don't do this. And another thing, I know you're volunteers, and I tried to look on the internet, and I couldn't find anything about the background of the people that are planning this or moving it up the next line. I don't know that you guys are qualified to do, make a decision that is this huge. You're talking about affecting possibly hundreds of thousands of people. We don't know what the pollution is. We know, I mean, yeah, it's not going to be a water sucker and all of that, but we don't know what the pollution's going to be. We have no idea. The diesel generators do have to run. They have to test themselves all the time. I think there's going to be a lot more to this than meets the eye. And the only people that are going to gain are these people that are making the money at the top, and they don't even know who their customer is. They, you know, you say we have transparency and we know all about this. Well, the gentleman that said that we know all about this, we don't know one thing about this. This is not trans, this is as opaque as you can be. And you have to, you have to stop and think about this.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Erica Hernandez. And Erica, please state your address, if you're a city resident and an adjoining property owner.
Hello, my name is Erica Hernandez. No, I'm not in the city limits. I live in Charlotte, specifically 7705 Paradigm Circle Drive. And I do want to say that I work for Clean Water for North Carolina, and there are a lot of concerns regarding this proposed data center campus. Firstly, the sudden popularity surge of data centers across the world has led to many concerns in reports stating their negative impacts on our water usage, utility bills, and our climate goals. AI infrastructure dramatically raises water demand due to these centers running 24/7. They need to keep cool and powered. And according to researchers, it's projected that worldwide AI-related water withdrawals will reach between 4.2 to 6.6 billion cubic meters by 2027. This amount is more than half of the UK's annual water use. Although Compass Data Centers has stated that they plan on using air-based cooling to reduce water usage, but without enforceable conditions, it is difficult to know if this commitment will hold as operations expand. The energy demand for data centers could also lead to an increased reliance on fossil fuels and higher costs for utility ratepayers. The New York Times and WUNC recently reported on the fact that all of our electricity rates are already going up to pay for the infrastructure needed to power data centers. This new data center would only make it worse. Additionally, there are more proposed unwanted infrastructure in and near Iredale County. For example, the expansion of compressor Station 150, which is in Mooresville, as a part of Transco's Dangerous Proposed Southeast Supply Enhancement Project, and the new proposed gas plant in Catawba County, which is also full of data centers. Compass Data Centers is proposing approximately 340 acres owned by Stamey family to be rezoned for this data center. I kindly ask for this board to request Compass to present more detailed plans on water sourcing, energy uses, environmental considerations, and traffic modeling, especially considering the fact that there are several schools within a 2.5-mile radius, such as West Iredale High School, West Iredale Middle School, and Celeste Henkel Elementary School. Clean Water for North Carolina, along with many other residents, strongly oppose this proposed data center due to the high risks it will pose in the community, such as straining local water supplies, adding more stress to an already fragile power grid, along with noise, air, and light pollution. Growth should never come at the expense of clean water, public health, and negative environmental impacts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Cody Blizzard?
Hi, my name's Cody Blizzard, and I live in Statesville out of city limits, about five miles away from where this data center is about to be put in. Basically, I'm going to start off by saying that I wasn't really planning on coming and speaking because I'm a busy man who has worked, I've been working all day. because I'm a busy man who has worked, is, I've been working all day. I have a pregnant wife and a two-year-old at home that I decided to spend time away from this evening just so I could come down here and voice my opinion on this matter. I'm going to start off by saying I'm a proud North Carolina native, born and raised in Mooresville, and I enjoyed growing up in Mooresville. But by the time I got into my twenties, Mooresville had become way too overdeveloped and commercialized, to the point where the town was overcrowded and you couldn't get anywhere without sitting in constant traffic. So in 2021, I decided to buy a house up here in Statesville, out in the country where I felt like it was a lot like Mooresville before it was ruined by overdevelopment. So when I talk to people, I tend to use Mooresville as the example of what not to do when it comes to running a town. But I will say, one thing that they did get right was by stopping a data center from being built in their town. That, might I say, would have undoubtedly drained a lot of precious resources. Data centers consume vast amounts of power and other resources just to keep them running. And unfortunately, the taxpayers will foot the bill in the long run due to rising utility costs because the data center will put such a strain on the town's infrastructure that it will constantly need upgrades to handle the resource draw of the data center. Now let's get to the environmental impact these data centers have, which is just as bad. One of the main reasons I love living out here in the country of Statesville is constantly being able to experience wildlife right outside my front door. And I don't see how a data center is going to benefit the envi, the environment and the quality of life of the people and the wildlife that live around the 300 acres they plan to steamroll. Why are they wanting to take 300 acres of prime agricultural land way out here when there's already an industrial side of Statesville? The town only has so much farmland and forest remaining, and once it's gone, it'll never come back. And I know some people will say, well, it's just one industrial center. But that's where it starts, and once that ball gets rolling, there's no stopping it. I mean, Mooresville's the prime example. And before you know it, all of West Statesville will become basically industrial land, and we won't have anything left. I've yet to find a single person in Statesville that's excited about the possibility of a data center besides the few people that have spoke that aren't gonna live near it. And the thing is, is if majority of the population is against it, why are we even here discussing this? And so what I'm trying to get at is that, I can tell you personally, as a father of, or soon-to-be father of two boys, I don't wanna wake up someday and have to explain to them why once the beautiful countryside of Statesville got demolished and why they won't be able to experience amazing wildlife and beauty in this town.
All right, sir, thank you.
Can I, can I just finish? I'm almost.
No.
Okay, so they're allowed to speak for 13 minutes, but we're not?
Made their presentation.
Thank you.
I just would like to know how many people that actually are putting this data center in are gonna live.
Sir, you need them?
Rusty Lee? Rusty Lee? And if you could state your address and name. If you're a city resident and adjoining property.
Hi, Rusty Lee here. Lifelong Statesville resident, 737 St. Cloud Drive. I don't live adjacent to the property, but longtime Statesville resident. Have kids that go to, grandkids that go to Celeste Henkel. A little bit about me, I'm a telecom engineer. I have, I'm a graduate of UNCC. I've been doing telecom engineering for approximately 20 years. I've had the responsibility for taking care and working inside data centers in the Carolinas and all across the country. In Northern Virginia, in Dallas, in pretty much anywhere, in Atlanta. I've been in data centers for, for years and years. I don't know how many other people have been in data centers to really have an idea of what this is. This particular one, the proposal that's being brought forth, is a little different. Compass does data centers differently. The data centers that I've been in, for the most part, are co-location facilities, basically what you call carrier hotels. They have a number of people that are in them, or a number of business entities are in them. This particular facility is gonna be so much bigger and offers a unique opportunity for the residents of Statesville and Aridale County because it is different. It's gonna enhance, if I didn't say it already, I'm for this. I'm enthusiastic about this. It's even hard to even put in words how enthusiastic I am. When I first heard of this particular project coming here, I was thinking like, well, how is it that Compass decided upon us to do a project like this? There are a number of technical reasons why they did it that I won't bore you with, but I'd be happy to get into it with other folks. It has to do with data latency, where this needs to be. I've heard a number of people that have talked about the AC power, about lithium batteries. A lot of those points are well-taken, but that's not the way the data centers work, not the modern data centers, anyway. A quick story to help you kinda understand my point of view. Early in my telecom career, I worked closely with an engineer, Jerry Nosie, that had the vision to start an internet service provider. He was an internet, the first internet service provider in Aridale County. One thing that I learned from him in, in working closely with him is that not only did you need to dream big, but you needed to plan big. That's not really my big point of the story. But one of the things that I did learn from him is that early in his career, he had the opportunity and was asked to join a little company that some people now know as Microsoft. He turned that opportunity down because he didn't really think they had a future. I can't say that how deeply he regretted that over the years, but he did. He had an opportunity that came knocking. He had the opportunity to join with, would have been a world-class company. He let that go. Now, that's not to say he had wasted time, he certainly didn't because he.
All right. Okay, I believe your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Leanne Huddleston? And if you could start with your name and address, and if you're a city resident or adjoining property owner.
My name is Leanne Huddleston. My address is 124 Mills Forest Lane, Mooresville, North Carolina. I am here representing my, which is outside of the city limits as most of the people here will be outside of the city limits since this property is outside of the city limits. I'm here today to represent my family, more specifically my mother, who is unable to come. And she resides at 310 Ashbrook Road, which is not directly across the street from Stamey Farm, but it's like at the corner of Ashbrook and Stamey, so it's relatively close. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am a county resident, a county landowner, and a county taxpayer. I am here today, again, on behalf of, behalf of my family, more importantly, my mother. She owns her home. We live not far down the road from Mr. Tucker, who you've heard from earlier. Her property is paid for, so she's not going anywhere, okay? In the spirit of collective and deliberate planning and considering the scope and scale of this proposal, the citizens deserve a full understanding of the potential benefits, risks, and financial trade-offs. So on record, I would oppose this at this time. We need more due diligence, okay? We need some research as it relates to the operation, the byproduct, the environmental impacts such as the water, the air, the soil, the light, the noise, and health impacts to all of Aridale County residents, whether you live inside or outside any city limit, be it Statesville, Mooresville, Troutman, any of the cities within Aridale County. I've recently had a crash course in how these processes work and what the Horizon 2045 Plan is, that there's one at the county level, that there's one in the city level, and that how they are supposed to align and mesh and check boxes off as we approve things to come to our area. Currently, there are plus or minus 2,800 Aridale-Statesville students across five schools within less than a 10-mile radius of this location, three of which are less than a five-mile radius, with those, those three being Celeste, West Aridale Middle, West Aridale High School, all of which I have attended.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. Next up, Paula Huffman?
Make sure I've got this right. My name is Paula Huffman. I live at 157 Stamey Farm Road, and I am an adjacent landowner. My husband Ed and I have lived in our home for 28 years. And before that, the land belonged to my grandparents. So our farm has been in the family for a long time. We have been fortunate to be neighbors of the Stameys. They have been wonderful neighbors to us. They have been good to our community, good to us as landowners and neighbors. They have been great contributors to Statesville and to Aridale County. And we appreciate so much their stewardship of the land all these years. Folks, I would like more than anyone in this room for everything to stay the same. My property backs up to this data center, and I would prefer that nothing change on Stamey Farm Road. The Stameys' farm is gorgeous, they've taken wonderful care of it. It's beautiful, it's a great backdrop to my property. But guys, it's not gonna stay the same. The Stameys are no longer in the business of raising cattle. Instead, they broker cattle internationally. They no longer need to farm that farm, and in fact, it's probably a drain on their productivity keeping up with it. They have the right to sell their property. And based on the land use proposal that's already in place, nothing to do with rezoning or changing, based on what's already in place, a lot of things can go in on that land. A lot of things. Do I really want a data center in literally my backyard? Not particularly. But what else would I want there instead? And something is going on that land. It's not gonna be a farm anymore. All those vistas are gonna be gone. And in fact, I imagine that where most of us live was at one point beautiful farmland or undeveloped woods. All these things change in time. I would love for nothing to change. I've raised my child there, I've played in those woods as a child. I rode my horses all over that farm when I was 10 years old. I rode all over the Stameys' farm too, because they allowed us to, which was great. But guys, it's gonna change. And I just ask you to think of this. We know there are some concerns about data centers. I personally had never thought about the lithium fires before, and I would love to see our county address that so that we don't end up being another story like Los Angeles or Maui, Hawaii that wasn't prepared. We need to prepare for those inevit, or those possibilities, not inevitabilities. I would like to see that prepared for. But guys, I want you to think, what else could go in there? We've already got an airport, we've had a dirt track, we've had a chipper mill. We've had all kinds of industry that might not be nearly as responsible as this one. So before you say no to the data center, I want you to think about the alternatives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mark Cash?
Madam Chair, Board, my name's Mark Cash. I live at 232 Low Ray Lane here in Statesville, about two miles from this proposed data center. I'd like to say that there's been a lot of feelings expressed here tonight. And some facts need to be brought up about things. Some things that were discussed were, who's gonna fight the fire? Well, this property is being asked to be annexed into the City of Statesville. City of Statesville just won some serious awards for their fire department for handling the issue. So I'm pretty sure the Statesville Fire Department can handle anything that you put in front of them. Got a great staff there. They also talk about the substation, the power substation. Well, currently, right behind West Aridale Middle School is one of the hugest Duke Power substations you've ever seen. It's been there for years. It's not new. That's where this power's coming from. It's been sitting there idle with a lot of extra area there to expand on. It's been there. The medical benefits, people, people talk about medical. AI is one of the greatest things ever for helping medical. I've talked to doctors, I've got good friends that's doctors. And, and the technology coming with doctors being able to reach others and through the AI technology is great. We all use data centers. Every time we pick up a phone, turn on the computer, we need data centers. Currently, the way this property is zoned, there could be 600 homes there. That's a lot of traffic, a lot more schools to build. Someone mentioned data centers do nothing. Well, Apple Data Center in Maiden has built a new city hall, has built a new fire department. There's a lot of things come out of the tax revenue that, that this creates. They've been a good, good steward to their community in Maiden, North Carolina. Catawba County actually cut their rate, tax rate, to a revenue-neutral tax rate when all of our taxes went up during the last revaluation. The tax rate didn't, but we paid a whole lot more because of the revale. So there's just, there's a lot of benefits to this. Lot of discussion about health issues. Well, there's so many federal regulators, EPA, ASHA, they're, they're not gonna let anything go, be dangerous out there. It's never gonna happen. And here's the rudeness, there's been a lot of people in here rude talking over people when they're talking, and it's very rude. And, and I really encourage you, the state, the county 2045 Plan, the city Future Use Plan, have all.
Thank you.
Read this.
Thank you. Pamela Locke? Pamela Locke, were you able to make it upstairs? Okay. All right. Jeff Byers? Dale Warren? Josh King, maybe? 231 Gordon?
How you doing? I'm Josh King, I live in Stony Point. I've been lucky enough to start a business in Statesville, work with the town, with the city of Statesville, building to building. I learned some of the processes we went through for that. I am, I've been able to learn about EVs. We have EV chargers at my work. There's a lot with lithium batteries that we don't understand as fire departments, sorry. But this state has had hurricanes, floods, fires. Like, Aridale County, they have a lot of money. Some of these low-lying counties that don't have a lot of money, if a data center can do all this stuff with all this money with low impact, why wouldn't you go to these counties that need money? Why wouldn't you go to the counties that need schools, the counties that need fire departments? Like, think of that stuff. Think about the poor people. Don't think about Statesville getting rich and Aridale County getting rich. We can build stores, hotels, parks, recreation, fun stuff. Give all the big money to the counties that really, really need it. It's low impact, there's more jobs. Everything's being built off-site. If it's being built off-site and trucked in, that's gonna be a lot easier for those counties, right? So why can't we think of that stuff? And thank you, somebody else can have my time.
Thank you. See. Renee Moran? Renee, what about Samuel Estes? Nobody else down there? Okay. Samuel, you go ahead, state your name, your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Samuel Estes. I live and reside at 1759 Old Mountain Road, Statesville, North Carolina. I'm sure the Stameys and everyone in here is very, very familiar where Old Mountain Road is. It's the backside of Stamey Farm. Growing up as a child, I'd have bad days. I would cut through the cornfield. Go ahead, be mad at me for trespassing as a child, but I watched the cows out there. That's what called me as a child. The country setting is what called me as a child. Now, with that being said, I have served this community for 17 years on the fire department here. If you wanna do a data center, by all means, do it, but you're picking the wrong place to do it. And here's the reason why. You have prime, prime location over here just off East West Front Street, over there off Highway 90 by Kawani. You go out Highway 70 there, Statesville Business Park, there is prime location out there as well. There's not that many houses out there. So why should I be affected? Why should my house and market, my house value be affected? Stameys is gonna make money off this, y'all are gonna make money off of this. It's gonna cause my house to go down. Who's gonna wanna buy a house next to that? Not to mention that I'm also raising an 11-year-old child there. I want him to experience the things that I experienced growing up. And by God, if he blessed me with grandchildren, I'd want him to be able to, him or her to experience that as well in the country setting. I shouldn't have to move. I didn't move away from this city. I didn't. I stayed at home because of this country setting. I've traveled all over this country. I've even done it by motorcycle. I've seen all this beautiful land that we've had, but nothing is like home. And that's the way that it should stay. That's the way that it needs to be. If you wanna sell your property, by God, do it. But a data center is not the way to do it. It's gonna have negative impacts. If you've ever been on a construction site like I have, I've been in construction before. I've worked six years in construction. The dust, the noise, the pollution. Guess what? ASHA and EPA ain't there. When they're not there, who follows the rules? It wasn't followed, I can tell you that right now. But also, with that being said, my lovely wife here, four years, moved down here from Minneapolis, Minnesota. Actually, Coon Rapids, a suburbs outside of Minneapolis, Minnesota. She specifically chose this area, and guess where her house is? The Light Loop next to the airport. It's a country setting with airplanes. Now, with the airplanes being said, Old Mountain Road, we are right there in the flight pattern. Planes, country setting cows, not buildings, not big buildings, it's just uncalled for. But I heard, I've got so much to say, and obviously, that's like an uneducated hiccup here, and I'm not gonna apologize for that because I'm speaking from emotion, because I had no intentions of speaking tonight. If you're gonna build it, don't build it there. Expand back this way, or use the properties you have in the city that are vacant now. You have the infrastructure here, the sewer, the power. Do it in the city limits where you already have all those resources. Don't mess up my front yard, don't make my house be a cheap piece of crap. And don't rip my child's children, my children, my. And don't rip my child's children, my children, my child's childhood away. It's not right. Thank you for your time. You're going to make your own decision. I'm sorry again, this is from emotion. Put it somewhere where you have the resources.
Thank you. Did we have Pamela Locke? Okay. Jeff Byers? All right. Come on up, Jeff, and just make sure you state your name, address, if you're a city resident, and if you're an adjoining property owner.
My name's Jeff Byers. I'm 64. I've been a lifelong residence of, uh, West Iredale. And no, I choose never to live in the city limits. I live on Bethlehem Road, which is across from Stamy Farm. And I'm old enough to remember two-thirds of my life that it wasn't Stamy Farm Road, it was Fry Gilbert Road, until donations and political parties got the name changed. I digress. I've moved seven times in my life, seven times, and never have left West Iredale. This is very upsetting to me. The day, the first meeting is when the signs went up. I, I just, I can't fathom that. But I'm a dress, I'm a step on some toes. And I want the crowd to know this. Number one, I don't trust anything a developer tells me. I don't trust what politicians tell me. And I'm going to tell you why. The airport expanded, and we were given this pie in the sky. Our road connected from Hickory Highway over to Bethlehem, I mean, uh, to Old Mountain Road. And we were told, we're going to, we're going to open it back up. We're going to do that. How many years ago was that? The city council come out and said, this is what we're going to do. City council still hasn't done anything. The last meeting I attended, I was told how great the airport's doing, how much revenue's coming in. Oh, by the way, we don't have money to expand the road. So don't hand me this pie in the sky crap. And I guarantee you, I've already, I heard it said earlier, not a single one of y'all live in the vicinity where this is going to happen, or you wouldn't want it. I'll promise you that. I know that I don't even have to ask that question. But the thing about it is, like I said, I've moved seven times in West Iredale. Yes, I live right there at the airport, but you know what? I chose that. I'm not choosing this. I think it's a crying shame. Number one, I've heard it's already been approved for 500 homes to go in over on Gilbert Road that used not to be Gilbert Road. And now this, I'm not buying it for one minute. This is, this is corrupt from day one. I know how the Stamy's did with the political parties. I know the fundraisers they had. So that tells me all I need to know, that money was under the table, this is probably a done deal, and the council is probably laughing at every resident that's coming up here. That's okay. Where's my Bethlehem Road? Why is it not completed? You can't trust anything a politician says. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. Dale Warren?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Dale Warren. I live at 144 Greenwich. I own the farm that's along with my brother, 453 Bethlehem. We have approximately a mile of Back Creek that runs through our farm that we solely rely on for water for our cows. Just a few weeks ago, runoff from the Stamy Farm poisoned the creek, killed all the fish, cows wouldn't drink, had a lot of problems. I ended up having to notify Wal- Parks and Wildlife. They didn't respond. Finally got them out. Two days later, we got North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality out there. First thing they said, came from Stamy. It did. It came from Stamy Farms. I am not adjacent to the farm, but my creek runs through it. Now, you can say it's not my creek, it's the state of North Carolina's, but it is my creek. We maintain it. We clean it up. I've taken multiple trash out of it. It is, it is my creek. The other thing that I kind of enjoyed not going first, because I didn't get to repeat what everybody else said multiple times, but I did listen to the presentation, appreciate it, it's nice and sweet. One thing that does, never does happen, oh, by the way, I'm a, uh, not only am I a small cattle farmer, I'm an engineering and maintenance manager at a refinery. Just spent 45 years in Texas. My goal was to move back to North Carolina, come back to Statesville. I don't call Statesville my home no more. Maybe, but not right now. I'm in the shallow. Spent my life savings. My farm wasn't handed down to me. I earned every bit of it. I paid for every bit of it. I paid for every cow that's on that place. I paid for all the feed. I paid for the water, everything else that goes in that place. I have spent my life savings. So I'm not going to go down without a fight. The data center, I just need some questions answered. One, you said it's a hybrid, but you said no water. So we know that's a lie. Can't have hybrid and not have water. The other thing that was felt to mention was, um, if we have a spill into Back Creek, how are we going to control it? Back Creek runs down, goes past through the city of Statesville's property at the airport, goes down to Rammer Lake, and then ends up in Third Creek. Long ways. We had dead fish, thousands of dead fish, using environmentally safe, disinfected, milk byproducts, just milk byproducts, which is also a hazmat material, spilt into the creek. The developer mentioned that we're going to use a environmental-friendly vegetation. Stamy was fertilizing 300 acres of soybeans. How much more vegetation can you get as a filter? How much more can you do it? Also heard, so the other thing about we build the best, A, I'm in the business. We go out for bids. We get what we want at the lowest price. If we want a Cadillac and a Volkswagen will get us there, that's what's going to be bought. So don't, don't believe that. I appreciate your time, but the other thing is-
Thank you, sir. We have to go to the next person. I'm sorry.
Previous suit, use the word "we."
I'm sorry, sir. We have to go to the next person. Renee Moran? Renee? All right. If you'll come up and state your name and address, and if you're a city resident and adjoining property owner.
My name is Renee Moran. I don't really want to state my address, but I'm within a five-mile radius for security reasons. And I'm not adjacent to the property, and I do not live in the city. I didn't want to be up here today to talk because I wasn't prepared, but I was waiting for somebody to mention what my concern is, and nobody mentioned it. My concern is, I recycle. And my research is, these facilities last 30 years. Y'all said the roof lasts 40 years. So what happens when it's obsolete or it's not functional anymore? What happens to the waste? Are we going to fill our landfills in here in outer county? So that was my, one of my concerns. But I was supporting it, I mean, I was not supporting it, and right now, I'm on the fence because I've had some good ideas, and I think we need to go forward with a lot of this technology. My son is an AI. He created an AI company. But I need more research too, for me to get off the fence. So that's what I would appreciate, maybe to find out what they're planning on doing after it's obsolete. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And that was the last person we had sign up to speak at the public hearing. So with that being said, our public hearing is going to close. Do y'all have any? We're good? Yeah? Any discussion amongst us? Anything we need clarified?
Lot's been said. Lot's been said. But looking at it, looking at the plan, looking at things, knowing where the property is, when, when Interstate 40 went by the property in the 50s, I think it was, you know, it changed it from, from a farm to potential industrial expansion. The, uh, I, I do know this, that the property will be sold somewhere sometime. We've said that more than once tonight. And as far as a neighbor, a good neighbor, here you have something that in 1.3 million square feet of land, that's a lot of- Okay, closer? Okay, sorry. That's, that's a lot of land, and I'm not sure why they picked it, but I do know that that, that farm has been for sale on the open market for at least three years, maybe longer. And we've, we've been through a lot of things here with, with development. Development is tough. Development is tough. There's no two ways about it. And I, I sat on the Iredale County Planning Board for eight years back when I was a contractor and Realtor in Statesville. I stayed in Statesville to, to be a Realtor and have had several, several different careers in town. But this, in, in, in looking at it, we're talking a billion-dollar potential asset. And people, I saw my tax, I just got my tax bill. And the impact to the community, it does use closed-loop water system. As an engineer, I worked on, on a closed-loop system in Rubbermaid 50 years ago, where you bring the water in and you close it up, and you have some kind of heat exchanger, which they're using air as opposed to water to, for the heat exchange, just like your air conditioner outside your house, the, the condensing coil, it's got a fan blowing the air through it, and that's what makes, makes it all work. And instead of a, a housing project or a factory, we have, we have lots of land that's being, being built with warehouse space, it's going to take trucks. The city has put off using trucks. I remember consolidated freight. This, this is 30 years ago or more. Wanted to do it, and they wouldn't do it because, because of truck traffic and stuff like that. But this, this has low impact. No matter what you do, if you put 600 houses out there, where's the fire department for that? I don't know. Where's the schools for 600 houses? Here, we're talking 200 people. 200 people is a lot of people. But yet, it's high, you know, relatively high, high technical people that are going to work there, so they're going to get paid better. To me, this checks all the boxes. It's low impact, it's- Excuse me?
Can you?
Uh, it, you know, and it, to me, it checks all the boxes. It's low impact on what it's going to use. We, Duke Power's going to provide the power. Sewer line, sewer line is out there. That's, that's been, been pretty much worked, worked out in the past. And here, you've got 200 people, and that's it on a, on a, on a community. Truck, trucks coming in and out, those people coming to work. So, uh, you know, I, and I understand that, and I've, I've seen it when, when I was on the Iredale County Planning Board too. It's, it's tough. Tough, change is tough. But I think it checks most of the boxes of what the community and what the plans that we have here, that we identify, the long, long-range plans, mobility plan, et cetera, et cetera, that it meets that. And with that, I would, I would move that, uh, we move this forward.
If anyone had something to say, they were able to sign up during the public comments? Yes, for three minutes. Ma'am? Would you like to continue making your motion? This is a volunteer committee.
Because it checks so many boxes off of what the city-
Okay, ma'am, can you please exit, please? Can you? Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chairman.
All right. If you would like to exit, please exit. We're going to continue. Go ahead, Joel.
I, I believe, uh, I'm- I believe that we were in the process of making a motion.
Yes. Let's hold it.
This can clear up.
I would like to see any one of you move within five miles of there and still vote for this. You're all wrong.
Please exit. Thank you. Thank you to the City of Statesville Police Department.
I believe we were in a process of making a motion. And, um, I do appreciate all the input we've had. And I will have to say personally that, um, at the beginning, it was a difficult decision even for me to make. And I know that, uh, my motion will not be the popular one. It will not be a popular one with most of the people here. But I feel that, um, it, the, this use, I want to give a quick example. I, I can remember when cell towers first started and in my, the responsibilities I had at the time when they were beginning to be very popular, we had a lot of opposition to a cell tower being anywhere near anybody else, until most people ended up with cell phones. And then it was no longer a major issue because it was something that was needed and was beneficial to the future. And, and I believe that that's what this is. I don't understand all of it, but I believe that it is part of what our future is going to be. And if it's going to be part of what our future is going to be, I really don't think that we should turn down an opportunity for that future to be in our, in Statesville and Iredale County. So I'll be glad to second your motion, or I'll be glad to make it, whichever one you want. Okay.
Go ahead.
I move we approve the ZC 25-13 Compass Data Center. The zoning amendment is approved and is consistent with the city's comprehensive land use plan, is response reasonable and in the public interest because the 2019 Mobility Development Plan projects two land use plan options for the Airport I-40 focus area regarding these properties. Concept A projects half of the properties for mixed-use neighborhood and half for multi-manufacturing logistics. Concept B projects all of these properties for manufacturing slash logistics. A data center is neither strictly manufacturing or strictly logistics. It is both because it produces information or data and manages the flow of equipment, power, cooling, and data within the facility. When a 2045 land development plan, when the 2045 land development plan was adopted afterwards, the mobility plan was taken into consideration, and this area was projected as activity center or employment center slash industrial flex. Employment center flex and industrial includes business parks, corporate campuses, flex space, manufacturing, distribution, and in other industrial uses. Secondary uses include retail. In addition, these properties are located in the Tier 2 growth area. Utilities are currently available or are in the planning stages. In addition to the adopted plans referenced above, the concept plan and conditions offered by the applicant provide large buffers and an expanse of undeveloped land between the proposed structures and adjoining properties. The primary entrance is in close proximity to I-40, and the interchange in the data center is a less intensive use regarding traffic than the distribution center or retail development.
I'll stick with that.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, item number five is going to be ZC 25-04. We're going to stop for a minute and let anyone who wants to leave, leave. We're going to stop for a minute and let anyone who wants to leave, leave.
Did he recommend it?
They did. I know you are. It's good to see you, brother.
You doing all right?
Making it. Making it. How's your shot?
Well, my house is...
Yeah, I don't know what you're referring to there. He said it.
Okay, moving on to that second to last agenda item, which was ZC 25-04 Hillhaven Subdivision. Ma'am, can I help you? Did you get your question answered? Is Sherry out there? Ma'am, the planning director's out there, she may be able to assist you. It was a... Oh, okay.
And I wanted to understand when he said that they didn't have enough schooling for 500 houses, but that they could afford this. Why they was able to approve 500 houses on their road less than a year ago?
Not that, okay. I was seeing if it was something I could help with. Okay, thank you, ma'am. This was, the next one is the Hillhaven subdivision. This is a courtesy hearing for a rezoning application filed by Mr. Robert Williamson, located at the intersection of Shelton Avenue and Hillhaven Road. This is to rezone it from Iredell County R-20, Single Family Residential District, Iredell County HB CUD Highway Business Conditional Use District, and Iredell County Neighborhood Business District to City of Statesville R-8 CZ Medium Density Single Family Residential Conditional District. If you want to... Go ahead, Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. As stated, this is a rezoning. And the applicant tonight is Mr. Robert Williamson. And as you can see on the screen tonight, this is our location map that shows what we're considering tonight is a rezoning of 147.2 acres of land. And it's at the intersection of Shelton Avenue and Hillhaven Road. This is a conditional rezoning request. So remember that the project is tied to the concept plan and conditions. For this specific case, the water will be provided by, would be provided by the City of Statesville. Sewer could be provided by City of Statesville. And electricity could also be provided by City of Statesville. This is a site photo of what part of the property looks like right now. And as with any rezoning, we'd like to look at the area around the site and see what kind of zoning it has and what kind of uses. So what we have here is an aerial map of the site. And you'll see as you look north of the site, there is a Statesville, City of Statesville R-15M Residential District. And there you will find some farmland, including some existing homes. You also have a City of Statesville B-5 Highway Business District with parcels that are currently vacant. If you look east of the site, you'll find Iredell County Neighborhood Business. There's a business there called Air and Hydraulic Service. There's also an Iredell County General Business District with a business called 21 South Mobile Homes. Then you have Statesville B-5. There's a lot of different zoning in this area, which is highway business. And there you have Iredell Wholesale Car Sales, Iredell County R-A, which is Residential Agriculture District, Chalet Estates, and other single-family homes. And then finally, you have Statesville R-20, which is also residential district with existing single-family homes. This is our zoning map, shows some of the things we're talking about. South of the site is in Iredell County R-A Residential District. You have Iredell Memorial Park there, which is a cemetery. You have farmland. You have single-family homes and a VFW post. You also have the Iredell County M-1 Light Manufacturing District in this, south of the site. And there you'll find Troutman Chair Company. Iredell County Neighborhood Business is in this area, running along Highway 21. And then finally, west of the site, you have an Iredell County R-20 Residential District, which has existing single-family homes and an R-10 Statesville Residential District that has the Hidden Lakes subdivision, which is rather new. The developer has provided us with some renderings. This is what the proposed housing would look like in this development. You can see what we usually ask for is a mixture of building material. On the front, you have the dormers, the little porches and things like that, so that nothing is just a straight cookie cutter design. The 2045 Land Development Plan calls for this area to be a mixture. Most of the time, the cases we deal with, it just designates one intent area. This one has two. You can see along the highway here, you see the pink area. That's called the Activity Corridor. Up top, you have the yellow, which is the Complete Neighborhood 2. Now, what that means is the Complete Neighborhood 2 intent area is intended for things like this, a housing development. The corridor, the Activity Corridor is usually intended for things like retail, commercial, and so forth. However, it is staff's opinion that some of the area along this highway, dealing with the terrain, the gullies and the drainage basins and so forth, that you're dealing with there, it would be acceptable to amend the 2045 Development Plan and make it Complete Neighborhood 2. Additional information is this is in a Tier 2 growth area, which means that you do have all the utilities either there or close by for providing this development. As we stated, this is a conditional rezoning. These are, this is a list of the nine conditions that the staff and the developer have agreed on. Number one, you can see that we've held them to a range of housing like we do with all the other developments. And their range would be anywhere between 350 to 405 units, although they are projecting a 385-unit count. Number two, we're asking that they dedicate 45 foot from center right-of-way on Shelton Avenue. Dedicate 45 feet from center line along Hillhaven as well. In addition, there will be a TIA Traffic Impact Analysis done on this site. Number five, you can see what I talked about earlier, then we're asking for a mixture of at least two building materials on the front of the homes. Number six is installation of something we call Verkata cameras. This is something the police department asked for at the entrances. This serves two purposes. One, during construction, we've had a lot of these construction sites that have been experiencing high theft of building materials. And this has helped solve a lot of those crimes. And then after the building, the development's built, it serves the second purpose, which is for neighborhood, you know, just neighborhood policing. Number seven, provide enhanced landscaped entrances into the subdivision. And then eight is shield, we won't, this is something the council has been adamant about. And they feel, and it does make the communities look better. As you drive down the road, nobody wants to see the back of a house. So we're asking that they provide an enhanced tree landscaping buffer in addition to what's already requested along those roads to shield the backs of houses from the view as you drive down the road. And then finally, we're just asking that they provide the larger lots along the outside perimeter of the development. With this development, we do have a few corrections that we wanted to ask be done before it comes back to City Council. We didn't get a chance to work with them to do this before tonight's meeting. So, like any other contract, you have to put that in writing so that it's held up. The first one here is, we would like for them to add some walking trails on the site. Now, I know we've discussed it with them, the topo is limiting in that development. But we feel like it could be incorporated, at least in a small variety. Number two, construct an entrance off of Wallace Springs Road instead of a cul-de-sac at the northern quadrant of the development. Reason we ask for this is it's in our uniform code, it's in our ordinance, and that we ask for this. Number three, replace Hammerhead with a cul-de-sac below the first entrance off of Hillhaven Road on the east side of the development. And I'll show you what that looks like here in just a second with the concept plan. Number four, need to provide a set of renderings for the homes. You can see they've already done that. The stormwater ponds need to be dry instead of wet because they are within five miles of the airport. We do that so that we don't attract birds that could come into contact with the planes, bust windshield. Number six, provide a chart with lot sizes. And they have done that. We use that to verify the open space, make sure they provided what we've asked for. And let me back up here. When I was talking about the Hammer, well, the entrance to Wallace Springs Road, I was talking about this right here. And I know, you know, a lot of people in the neighborhood probably won't like that. But like I said, our reasoning is that the ordinance does ask for it. Also, right here, you see this Hammerhead. Our engineering department has asked that that be changed to a cul-de-sac. That was the two corrections that I wanted to point out. As far as the 2045 Land Development Plan goes, the property meets the definition of the Complete Neighborhood 2. And as I explained, there's a little ambiguity with the Activity Corridor. However, since this proposed subdivision does match the surrounding area, which is mainly residential, and the topography of the area near the highway is very challenging, an amendment to the 2045 Land Development Plan is acceptable, in our opinion. Therefore, staff recommendation says that we looked at this property being in a Tier 2 growth area. It meets the definition of the Complete Neighborhood 2. Again, we feel like the amendment for the Activity Corridor is warranted if you choose to do so. We also looked at the fact that utility services are available at the site. As we said, it's in Tier 2 growth area. And it is also within a four-minute response time for the fire department. Those are some of the important factors that we'd like to check the box on. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the zoning request contingent upon annexation, the conditions that I went over, and the corrections that we listed in the staff report and on this presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I've got one. Where does City of Statesville city limits start? Is it at the red light there, at that, this area there?
No, it's on...
Oh, on down?
It's on up, it's on up closer to the city center. If you go the other direction on 21, if you go north on 21...
No.
It's actually quite a ways up there. However, we do have, if you look here, you know, the way annexations work, and you've got to look at the total area around you. For example, Hidden Lakes subdivision, which is off of Wallace Springs Road, that's one of the new subdivisions that was approved within, I guess, the last three years, maybe a little longer, I don't know. But this is Hidden Lakes. It's in the city limits by way of satellite annexation, voluntary annexation. So we've, although the contiguous city limits is quite a ways up the road there, you do have satellite annexations at different spots around this area, even these three little spots here. And these are, I know this one here was a house that volunteered into the city because they needed water. Their well runs dry. And that happens a lot. And that's probably what these three were. Sure.
Put the plat back up?
Yeah.
This takes, encompasses all those, those kind of sketchy properties there on...
Yeah, there's a few little parcels that are not included. You can see right here's a few, you know, there's little parcels in here and then along the road.
Around 21, that one, that old building with the glass block end on it?
Right.
Is that going away?
No, that's not, yeah.
But the property does include everything on that seat there in...
Everything you see highlighted there in blue or orange, yes.
It just seems like those buildings that we're talking about would sort of be out of, just not fit in.
Well, they sort of don't fit in now, but I think that's something that over time, usually in planning and zoning and development of a city, you know, you're going to have uses and buildings and structures that don't, they look like they don't fit in. And it might be that they're outdated or in this case abandoned and sort of rundown. But over time, someone usually ends up buying it and redeveloping it. I know if you just look what's going on right now, you know, Statesville is having a lot of growth. Well Troutman's seeing a lot of growth, too. They just approved this, what is it, the Wakefield Development, I think? It's huge. That's on the other end of 21. I think you've got growth on both ends of 21. And I think one day, you're going to see it come together and it's going to look a lot better through there.
The property owner or developer like to speak on the project?
Thank you, Herman. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. Nolan Gross with Urban Design Partners, representing the petitioner, Hillhaven Land Holdings LLC. Okay, sorry about that. All right, so here is that map showing the primary corporate limits compared to our site, which is south on US 21 to the east of the Hidden Lakes Development and north of Wallace Springs. Additional aerial imagery showing the site mostly wooded, however, there are a few homes on site today. Site's located north and south of Hillhaven Road, to the west of US 21, and east of Wallace Springs Road. Herman's touched on our existing zoning, so I won't reiterate this too much. We are requesting to annex and rezone into the City of Statesville R-8 Conditional zoning with a cluster development. with a cluster development. Similar with the land use and future character map, Herman's already identified or discussed this being an activity corner as well as a complete neighborhood, too. So a little bit of background on this project and how we got here this evening to present this petition before you. So, Urban Design Partners, we were brought on to work on this over a year and a half ago. We, we had our first bubble map diagrams around February of 2024. March 14th of '24, we had our internal kickoff meeting and started putting pen to paper, laying the community out. Our initial site plan proposed 517 lots. We were also exploring a mixture of single-family homes and townhomes in this development. October 31st, we had our initial meeting with planning staff here in this building. Our, our site plan at that time proposed 450 lots, mixture of single-family and townhomes, be it 364 single-family homes and 86 townhomes. Moving forward, at our March 26th community meeting, which was held at the VFW near the site, our development proposed 410 to 440 lots. That was our proposed lot range. Our site plan showed 421 lots. We had several neighbors attend that meeting, common concerns Herman already mentioned, the Wallace Springs access road, the Hillhaven connection, traffic, proximity to adjacent properties, density and lot sizes, items which we, we feel like we're working to address coming before the board this evening. And here we are this evening, August 26th, 2025, we're now proposing 350 to 405 lots, and our site is showing 385. So we've continued to reduce density as we bring this project and refine our site plan.
DUA, density units per acre?
Dwelling units per acre.
Dwelling units.
Yes, sir. So you can see that started at 3.51, and we're down almost an entire 1 DUA at 2.6 So here's that initial bubble layout, a great way to start our site planning journey. Now, this proposed 740 dwelling units with a mixture of single-family, townhomes, and apartments. This was our initial stab, you know, what might be viable on site, but of course, as we continued working with planning staff and receiving community feedback, we refined this plan. So here's where we, we began putting pen to paper. This is the 517 dwelling unit site plan, providing a mixture of single-family homes and townhomes at just over three and a half dwelling units per acre. You can see some similarities between our existing site plan that we're presenting this evening and what we had initially sketched out. Of course, there have been refinements through the process. Here was our community meeting site plan proposing 421 lots. Each lot was at a 50-foot width. At this meeting, at the meeting this evening, or at our community meeting, excuse me, we were proposing the roadway connection to Wallace Springs Road, something neighbors were concerned about, so we went back and revised the site plan to provide a cul-de-sac. We also relocated our Hillhaven, Hillhaven access point in this area on the southern side. All right, so here is our current site plan proposing 385 lots, that range of 350 to 405 lots at a just over 2.6 dwelling units per acre. Jump ahead to our rendered site plan. So as Herman mentioned, we are committing to additional buffers. Thirty, a 30-foot buffer would be provided along Hillhaven Road and US 21. Around the X, the remainder periphery, periphery of the site, we will be providing a 15-foot buffer. We did remove that Wallace Springs Road connection to help appease the neighbors and reduce traffic on Wallace Springs Road, as well as relocating the existing Hillhaven access, providing a Hammerhead turnaround, which in coordination with staff, we will continue to look at a cul-de-sac in that area. Also want to point out, the existing home at 152 Schaefer Hollow Drive is proposed to be repurposed and incorporated into part of our amenity, which is along the eastern part of the, the site in this area. Okay, so here's our lot diagram. So currently, we're proposing a variety of lots, be it a 50, a 50, a 50, a 56, and 60 feet or larger. So we are providing larger lots at the, at the site's periphery. 102 of the lots will be at least 60 feet wide, 116 56-foot wide lots, and 167 proposed 50-foot wide lots. So we've been trying to find a better blend and balance of our lot sizes throughout the Here's our open space diagram. By code, with our calculations, we were required to provide 21.41 acres. Now, that is the base 10%, as well as the additional requirements of the cluster development as part of the zoning process. We are providing 24.67 acres. I want to point out, that is exclusive of our proposed stormwater control measures, existing ponds, and wetlands. We are not using those to calculate our open space. Traffic coming diagram, proposing raised pedestrian tables throughout the development as well as a central roundabout. We are cognizant of traffic, wanting to slow internal traffic volumes, and this is a commitment we have made as part of the rezoning.
Those, those raised, and those, those are raised up and in level with the sidewalk, right? Pedestrians go across the street if they wanted to, I guess?
Correct. It, it's more preferable as opposed to a traditional speed hump, which just, there's no alleviate, alleviation for pedestrian foot traffic. Correct. So it's, it will slow down vehicles and also provide a safe mid-block crossing for pedestrians.
Will there be a place for anyone in that community to get out to the Wallace Springs Road? I don't see a-
Not as currently designed. If we were looking at extending that roadway where the cul-de-sac is shown, we would extend sidewalk to the front edge.
Wasn't that one of the requests, was to put that, take that out and put it, put it back to Wallace Springs Road?
It was a request from staff, I believe, engineering staff, Herman, to put that back into the plan. We had taken it out at the request of neighbors at our community meeting.
Oh, okay.
That's something we're happy to continue coordinating.
I'm, I'm not clear on that because I was under the impression that you had been asked to take it, take the cul-de-sac out and to Wallace Springs, but that's not what you're proposing here.
So, we're proposing the cul-de-sac instead of the connection to Wallace Springs. Engineering staff would like to see that connection, so i- if that becomes a hot pressing item with staff and with the boards, we can explore reinstalling that connection. We modified this at the request of the neighbors to reduce traffic on Wallace Springs Road and prevent headlights from shining in abutting properties.
Okay, so that came from your meeting?
This came from our community meeting, yes, sir. Okay, here's our block length exhibit. So there's a snippet of the, of the land development code in the bottom right-hand corner, and in essence, this states, "Any block greater than 1,500 linear feet or less than 300 linear feet must be approved by the planning board." So we have reviewed this with staff. We do have several blocks that are less than that 300-foot threshold, and that's because our typical lot dimensions, when you're putting lots back to back, it does not exceed the 300-foot threshold. So you can see there are several, the, the cul-de-sac, which we have been discussing, as well as areas where we're showing the back-to-back lots. So we would request that the planning board consider allowing us to provide blocks less than 300 feet as shown. Herman touched on each of these during his staff presentation, so I will not reiterate each of them. I will point out, we are also committing to a maximum building height of two stories in this development.
And a story runs to the eve line, not the top of the roof.
Well, there's a 35-foot restriction on it, can't go over 35 feet.
Okay, and our corrections, of course, we'll continue working with staff. I do want to point out, the, the walking trails, we're happy to look into, we would love to be able to provide walking trails on site. We would need to look at things like, do these need to be ADA accessible trails, because there are topographic constraints? But we are providing approximately five miles of internal sidewalk on both sides of our proposed public road network. Constructing that entrance, of course, we'll continue that conversation, as well as replacing the hammerhead, which Herman pointed out, and we're happy to commit to dry ponds within five miles of the airport. Here's that lot size chart, which Herman had requested. So you can see our minimum lot area is 6,000 square feet. Our maximum lot area is just over 12,000 square feet, and our average lot comes in at 7,218 square feet. Herman showed our sample elevations showing a variety of building materials and articulation features.
What kind of siding is that?
So this could be a mixture of vinyl, cementous fiber, hardy board, in a vertical and horizontal fashion.
Those renderings look nice, I think I've done a good job with that, but I, I want to interject here, I think what it does not imply or show is the, and so to me is not really truthful, in a way, is the eight-foot setbacks. You know, so these houses are really jammed against one another, they're not in a nice wooded setting like that.
Sure, we, we can work to provide additional elevations, showing a hyper-realistic image of what it would look like driving down one of the public streets within the proposed development.
But, yeah. Somebody's gonna ask, what's, what's the price points you're looking at on these?
Yeah, so based on today's market, we're looking, starting price, low 300s to mid Jump ahead to our additional sample elevations, showing a mixture of one and two-story product And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't know if this is a question, but, you know, I didn't think that I would be voting for, I, I tend to be in favor of your subdivision. I didn't think I would be voting for another subdivision that didn't utilize perimeter brooms to kind of separate the neighborhood from the street views, but you guys have done a nice job with your, with your presentation and how you've aligned your houses with the street variation, the cluster aspect of it. Very, there are very few linear feet of areas that to me that look like would need a, a berm to isolate it, so that, you know, I think's a good layout.
Thank you, appreciate your feedback.
I think, I'm, I'm sorry, I think I'd like to hear maybe a little bit more about the cul-de-sac on Wallace. Again, if we're gonna be asked to vote to forward this on, and that's something that our engineering department here feels that it should have, and that the planning staff feels that it should have, how are we gonna vote to send it forward if we're not getting what we are asking for?
Well, it's, it's not that you're not getting what we're asking for, it's just that by the time we got the comments back to them, they didn't have enough time to make that correction on this rendering before the meeting. So I'm sure it's something they're willing to consider, but what they're pointing out is that they originally had the connection there, but in all honesty, you know, the community meeting, the neighbors wanted them to do away with that, and they done what the neighbors asked. It's a mixed bag, where I can see the argument that the neighbors make, however, the engineering department's saying, but it says here in our ordinance that we should ask for this whenever, you know, possible. It is a-
Well, I think you may have answered.
It is a, it is an item that you can choose which direction you want to go on as a board. You know, if you would want to side with the neighbors on that, you could, or if you wanted to decide with the engineering department, you could. It's just that the engineer's gonna ask for it because it makes the flow better, and it can, and gives you another entrance, as well as the fact that it's our ordinance, you know, we work for the city and the ordinance dictates what we ask for.
Yeah, so here's our community meeting site plan, which showed that connection to Wallace Springs Road.
I think personally, I like the cul-de-sac version myself. You end up getting more separation from the adjacent neighborhood with the cul-de-sac. You, there are plenty, you know, basically, up in that corner, you've got three routes out of there. So from fire perspective, life safety perspective, you're not gonna end up with a cutoff trap position, which is one of the things they have to take in consideration. So I, I don't know why the city's insisting on or requesting the, the, the opening. I realize there are numerous exits from this subdivision, so I actually, I think I prefer, prefer the, the cul-de-sac version myself.
If, if it's indeed an option, then I, I don't disagree with you, but I was under the impression that there was some requirement in our ordinance or something that would have required that. If it's not, you know, I'm not saying I disagree with you.
You do, you do have the ability to go either way.
Okay.
It's just, like I said, I'm, I'm carrying through the wishes from the engineering department and, and letting you know what their wishes are.
So someone, I, I'm, you know, I've been out in the neighborhood, but I'm not as familiar with it, I'm sure some of y'all are. So the traffic that would exit on the Wallace Springs Road drive exit, would they say coming into Statesville or getting back to 21, would they not still tend to come over to Hillhaven and come across, as opposed to following Wallace Springs around into 21? So in other words, that traffic's not gonna come back to Hillhaven?
Hillhaven is so curvy, particularly at night, so I guess they would come back to 21.
Would, would they come back on Hillhaven or Wallace Springs? Get the, they'll come back on Hillhaven? So that traffic's coming back to Hillhaven one way or the other?
Hillhaven's so small, I mean, it's a really small, unless they plan to do something with the, the roads, improve those.
In other words, what you're saying, if they, if they come out of Twin Le, or Twin Lakes, they're gonna come down to Hillhaven to go to 21?
Either one, that's what I'm asking, either way, are, are they not gonna come back to Hillhaven either way?
Yeah, they aren't gonna go through Wallace Springs to get to 21.
But the Wallace Springs in my, in my mind was for fire safety, I mean, fire emergency.
Any other questions? All right, well, if there's no more questions, we're gonna open up our public hearing. For everyone who signed up to speak, when I call your name, just make sure you come up, state your address for the record, and we'll have the three-minute timer over there, so you'll be able to look at it while you speak. So Angela, coming up, Angela Matthews.
Before we start my time, Madam Chair, can I just request, when I looked up online, it said five minutes, and so rather than me be speed reader and try to rush through this and not be able to give you guys a lot of information, would you allow me five minutes? We're a smaller group, so we only have a few speakers, would you consider that?
I'm fine with that, since you already have it prepared, is that fine with everyone?
Okay, can I, may I?
As we're creating an exception for you, we'll be creating an exception for those on the other side of the issue as well.
Yes. Hopefully, I won't have to come back up here again.
Side your own, but which-
I, I understand, I appreciate it. I'll be, I'll be quick. My name is Angela Matthews, and I live at 210 Southview Drive. I'm here tonight to voice concerns regarding the Hillhaven annexation projects. Annexations can have a positive impact on a city or county when done properly. These cluster home projects do not fall under what I and most residents would consider productive. First, I want to talk about safety and services. In your packet, you will see an article regarding the arrest of three individuals who were selling narcotics out of a home located at 222 Hidden Lakes Road. This home is literally through the woods, behind my house, and across the street. You will notice that the Iredell County Sheriff's Department completed the search warrants and made the arrests. Hidden Lakes is a development diagonal from this proposed development and was annexed into the City of Statesville. Why is the City of Statesville not policing these annexed developments? Annexation law requires that the annexing city be prepared to- Annexation law requires that the annexing city be prepared to provide the areas to be annexed with all the facilities and services that are provided within the existing city limits. I have a list with me tonight, and you can review online. The city currently has nine job openings listed. Seven of those positions are for services such as firefighters, police officers, and public works. It's not fair to the county residents that the city receives the tax revenue from these annexed areas, yet the county resources are being used to provide the required services. Next, I'd like to call you to review the cost of community services in Iredell County survey that was prepared by NC State University. You have it in your packet. In the essence of time, please flip to the flag tab, and you will see that for every dollar generated in tax revenue, it costs the county $1.35 to provide services. We are in the red before the developers even finish the project. These developers are the ones who make all the money and leave us, the taxpayers, to cover the infrastructure and related costs. It makes more sense for these areas touching Highway 21 to remain commercial. Commercial tax dollars help fund our local government and relieve the tax burden on the residents. We can say no to developers when it hurts our city and county financially. For example, this development would be located in the Troutman Elementary, Middle, and South Iredell High School districts. Troutman Elementary is at 119% capacity, the middle school at 89%, and South at 106%. You may say, oh, the new high school and elementary schools will take some of that overflow, but how will that help when you add a development like this one, Hillhaven, for a potential of an additional 700 students? We are right back to where we started again. Lastly, I ask you to consider sewer capacity. Fourth Creek has reached critical levels already, and Third Creek will be nearing those levels once the build-out occurs from developments that this board and the council have approved. Additional populations from Larkin, 351, Neighbors Road, 1378, and Stamy Ridge, the taxpayers are going to end up paying the $280 million for the sewer expansion. And I'll stop. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Was that three minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Did you cheat me my two minutes?
Okay. Well, and just for some clarification, where'd you find that it said five minutes?
Yeah.
There is a rule of procedure for the planning board that says five minutes.
That's what I was thinking, and city council's three minutes.
The board is... Public hearing procedures and rules. Five's to all boards, and it says three minutes.
Okay. But it's fine. I got most of it out. Just think about the sewer capacities and how we're going to pay for that.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us know that, because I just wanted to clarify so that everyone had the same information. Thank you, though.
All right. James Tarman. Back to three minutes, everybody. Mr. Tarman, if you could state your name and your address.
Jim Tarman. I live at 548 Wallace Springs Road. I'm not a city resident, I'm not adjacent, but I do live a quarter mile from Hillhaven Road and have for the majority of my 76 years on this planet. And I know you guys have had a long night, so I'll be brief. I live on a farm that has been in my family since 1751. Originally, it was 900 acres. I've got a small piece of that, but we're trying to maintain that as a farm. I spent 38 years driving to either Winston or Charlotte to come home to the country, and now the city's come to me. There's an old song that says, "Change was needed across the board, but it made a lot of difference since Ock Scott gored." And on Wallace Springs Road, we've kind of been gored. We have 400 houses for Hidden Lakes, 200 coming right behind it for Beaver Creek, we have 500 down the road for Wallace Springs. There's another couple hundred being planned between Hillhaven and my house. And I can tell you that the quality of life has already been affected. Traffic is tremendous. Emergency vehicles are coming through at all times of the day and night. Angela mentioned the cocaine bust, nine people arrested for, I'm sorry, meth, where the vehicle broke down the door of the house, took all these people out. Next day, squatters were in there, and the police, Statesville Police came, ran them out, ran them down to Julie's place, and they were arrested down there. So things are changing, and if you take into account what's happening now with traffic, and you look, there's 250 more houses approved already for the second phase of Wallace Springs. The 200 houses haven't been built yet for Beaver Creek, and so now we're saying 390 houses or thereabouts are going to be built. And when you look at developments individually, they meet the criteria, but when you look at the sum of the parts, it gets to the point where the infrastructure is just not there either from an emergency vehicle standpoint, a school system standpoint, the road standpoint. And, you know, I think you're going to approve this tonight because it checks all your boxes on your plan, but what I would ask you to do is consider this, and I've talked to Nolan about this, make it R10 instead of R8. Hidden Lakes is a lot of houses, but at least it's R10. And so I think there can be some things done. Also, the trees as a berm, I won't live to see them block the houses, so I'd love to see a berm as a condition as well around there, like Hidden Lakes did on the front of their place. I'm not against change, and there's always a natural tension between the been-hears and the came-hears, right? And I'm one of the been-hears, and I don't oppose the came-hears, but there's a point of diminishing returns on how many came-hears we can accommodate and still have a quality of life that we enjoy today.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Mike Edelbrock. I live at 217 Southview Drive, just right up the street from this development proposal. One thing that is a concern of mine was the last housing development you guys just passed on and the planning commission put down was on Erie Road, and some of the problems were infrastructure. 22 minutes for emergency response to people on Erie Road. We don't have school capacity for the children that you're talking about bringing. We don't have jobs for the people that are coming in these houses. We don't have grocery stores that can support the community right now. So I'm really concerned with not having the proper amenities for all the people you guys are trying to bring in. We have almost 1,000 homes coming, and Barium Springs is bringing in 2,500 homes. So I would really be concerned with infrastructure and bringing in jobs and bringing in support for the people that already live here instead of trying to bring more people. I don't know how many doctors and lawyers and trade people that you're bringing in with these developments that can improve our life and our quality that are here, but, I mean, if we could bring in some jobs and the infrastructure to support more people, I'm not opposed to change. I actually am not horribly opposed to the data center. It's going to happen, and I know that we need the taxes to keep the city going. I understand how all that works. I've owned a business for 30 years, but at some point, you have to be responsible and you have to bring in the infrastructure to support the growth, and I don't see where that's coming yet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Becky Edelbrock.
Hi. My name is Becky Edelbrock. I also live at 217 Southview. We are not adjacent, so we were not able to be at any of the prior meetings, otherwise we would have voiced our opinions as well. I'm not opposed to growth. The last development that was trying to come in our backyard that we came to the city council meetings for, we just bought our house a year ago. So we moved from the city to the country. We own 21 acres, and we intentionally purchased that to have space. You had said, and I'm sorry, I'm going to mutilate your last name, so I'm not even going to try, but you had said during the last thing that where are the schools for the 600 houses if that's what they were trying to put in instead of a data center? This is the same instance. We have all of these housing developments that are around us that are coming in, and there is no school system for them. We are at capacity. Obviously, you've already heard that. At the last meeting that we attended for the previous development, our big thing, my big thing personally, is density. I think there's a little bit of like a confusion almost, or I don't even know how to describe it because it's misleading. The county, which is what we live in and that's where we purchased, R8 is considered high density. According to the city standards, R8 is medium density. That's misrepresented, it's all the same criteria, all the same lot sizes, everything. We proposed that they change the last development to be at least R15 for the city, because, conditional, because with the topography, obviously, you have to do the cluster homes. We get that. If you do R15, then you're looking at a minimum of 11,000 square foot lot, and that would be in line with the county medium density. The surrounding areas, when you look at them, R10 is the lowest, R15, R20, that's what you see there. So if you guys reconsider denying the R8 and they change to at least R15, that's something that is a little bit more feasible for the residents and the city, I think, because growth is going to happen, not opposed to it, but responsibly. Thank you.
Kathy Everly?
Udi.
I messed that up. Sorry, Ms. Udi. If you'll come up front and state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Udi. I live at 422 Wallace Springs Road, directly across the street from that proposed road coming out. In fact, it would be a cross intersection there with my driveway. We already have enough trouble getting out of our driveway now because of the increased traffic, and we're not just talking about like in the morning when schools, school people are going, but we're talking all day long and even into 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. And it starts back up again at 6 o'clock when people start going to work and going to school and whatever. And it's not just cars. It's tractor trailers, it's dump trucks, it's concrete trucks. They're tearing up the road. It was just paved within the last five years. DOT or whoever maintains the road out there has already had to come out and rebuild the shoulders because people routinely run off the road. In fact, it's gotten so bad that I don't even take the dog across the street anymore to walk up the road. I try to stay at least 15, 20 feet back from the road because I'm not sure that these people flying around that curve down there aren't going to run off the road, which they do all the time, and come into my front yard and run over me and the dog. Also, there's a ditch in front of our house, and if they come off the road that way, they're going to flip and run into my wellhouse, too. But my concern with this density, I don't know why we cannot have a new neighborhood that comes in and is not like the Hidden Lakes and not like Wallace Springs up there that is cookie cutter houses by D.R. Horton. They look the same, and if you ride down Wallace Springs Road, you can see all of the backs of those houses. They look identical. It's just one vinyl box on top of concrete after another one. There's no architectural features, there's no hardy plank siding, there's no brick, there's, the lot sizes are teeny tiny. I mean, what is wrong with having a neighborhood that's 100 by 200? That's a half acre. That's nothing. And even 100 by 100 is better than 50 feet. And of course, we live in our house that was built in 1965, and the woods across the street are personal for us. We played in those woods. They cool the road, they cool surrounding areas, and interesting enough, I found out, when you cut down a tree, it releases all of its CO2. So we're talking about air quality concerns, too, when you start clear-cutting all of those trees. If they left a decent buffer around it, like 100, 200 feet, maybe the wildlife wouldn't have to go shrinking off, too.
So that was the last speaker. We have signed up. So with that, we're going to close the public hearing, and is there any questions, any conversation amongst us?
You know, we've had a lot of these hearings with these R5, R8 neighborhoods, and I've listened to these neighbors, these folks, and, you know, I think they've voiced a lot of what my thoughts are, too, for these neighborhoods. I think, and my thoughts is, we kind of have enough R5, R8, eight-foot setback neighborhoods. I think these guys did a great job with what they're dealing with. Somewhere, enough's enough of this stuff. There's like so many houses out. I ride my motorcycle and just kind of cruise around, and I go through here, and I see all these super-dense neighborhoods, and I just, I think it's time we moved on from that. And for us, R15, or, I'm not so sure we don't need to redefine, speaking to you guys, some of our setbacks, because that's really what it's about, is your side yard setbacks. It's what controls this thing. It's what gives this thing a view of density. I get it's also the lot size, but I think those are a critical aspect of it, too. So I appreciate your comments, and I think you've kind of persuaded me there.
Kind of agree with you, because when I look at this at 350, and I'm going, wow, where are they putting that many homes in that spot? But it comes back. Can I ask a question of Herman? When, when, and the lady, where she, that you brought up about the schools, thank you for calling me out on that. When they bring these to you, where is that part of the process and is that in a technical review committee? Are they looking at fire departments? Are they looking at schools? And if they are, how do we educate the public? How do you educate us that they're doing that? Because I, like, I look at these, you know, I live on, I never thought I'd live on an 80-foot lot in the middle of town, 80 by 180, but I do. And I love it because I can cut the grass in an hour, walk it. But, so where is that piece of looking at the school systems and the sewer line and so forth? Grocery stores come based on population, so they're going to find their way here.
We do, we do take all that into consideration. I mean, Statesville's got at least six grocery stores just within Statesville. We recently had a company that does analysis for grocery stores to see if we could maybe present to some more grocery stores to have another one come, and their comments were that we didn't have enough rooftops. We already had six grocery stores, and chances of getting a seventh one would be very low. So the grocery stores are not a problem, according to the market. Wastewater, that wastewater treatment plant that serves that area is only at 30 or 35% capacity.
That Third Creek or Fourth Creek?
Third Creek. That, this development will not even put a wrinkle in that. Water capacity, we have tremendous amount of water capacity. We're nowhere near looking at limits on that. Schools, we do look at that, and we also look at the financial aspect as to whether it's a cost-benefit analysis. And we have a development data sheet that we prepare for city council that's got all of that in there. It usually, it doesn't, it doesn't get completed until it goes to city council for public hearing. We could possibly look at trying to get that completed beforehand to give to you guys, but staff already knows the answers to all of that before we present it to you.
So in other words, what you're saying, that all of that has been considered when you brought this forward to us?
Yeah. Now, she did bring up a good, I don't have the school numbers, but I do think, you know, I wouldn't refute the school numbers that she presented tonight unless I had them in front of me. That is a major concern, but as the city, I wish there was something we could do to help with that, but that's a county responsibility. You can laugh if you want to, but that's state statute. We can't contribute money toward the schools.
And organic.
So...
It's in the county.
So then you, then you have the problem of due process. You know, if you have a person that wants to sell land and you have a developer that brings a project to you, you have to give them due process to ask the board, will you approve my project? So we make sure they abide by all the rules and present that to you. And it's up to the board to make the decision.
There was an item that's been brought up tonight, though, about the size of the lots. And we're looking at an average of, what, was it 7,000 and something on that? You know, what is the big problem of going to 10 or 12, a larger sized lot? Is that, does that make it a project that's no longer viable?
That's something I would, you know, that only the applicant could answer for you. That's, you know, it's not, it's more than likely it's gonna be a financial question or answer, is my opinion. Sure.
Sure. It's okay with me if it's okay with the chair.
Yes.
First of all, thanks again very much for the opportunity tonight. And we appreciate all the people that have showed up as well. My name is Bob Williamson. I'm one of the developers for the project. We've been doing this around Charlotte and at the coast for many, many years. My partners developed about 3,000 homes over the years. The objective is always to create a community that you'd be proud of and that you'd feel good living in. So there were a lot of comments raised. Density was one of the key questions, of course. And when we started looking at the site, when we met with Pam and her sister or the sellers, we drove through Hidden Lakes, we drove through Wallace Springs, we drove through all the other communities. And when talking with the sellers, too, we knew we wanted to develop bigger lots, a nicer community. We didn't want vinyl boxes. That was something that's been brought up here tonight several times, that looked like Wallace Springs, for example, that are, you know, with no trees around them and you can see the vinyl all sides of the house. So that's why we put the renderings in that we've put in with multiple different products on the sides, different elevations on the sides of the home, so it doesn't look like, just like a vinyl box. We don't want to use vinyl at all. We want to use the hardy plank, the brick, the stone, that sort of thing. And ultimately, it boils down to a question of what can we afford? What makes sense? And at the end of the day, it always boils down to economics. So if you look at what the market can pay, what people will pay for homes, at our community meeting, somebody had asked the question, why don't you build $500,000 or $600,000 homes on big lots? And while we would love to do that, the market doesn't support that, right? So we would love half acre lots, by the way. We like the idea of bigger lots. But the economics don't make any sense. And if the economics don't work, then the development can't work ultimately. So what you saw and what we presented tonight, hopefully, effectively, was that when we first started to lay this out, we tried to figure out what can be done and then what should be done. And then we took feedback. And Kathy, I appreciate you coming in tonight. Kathy was at the, there were a handful of people, as Nolan mentioned, at our community meeting in March. And one of the very first things you said is, if people come through to Wallace Springs Road, the headlights are gonna shine right in your front windows, right?
In your bedrooms.
And your bedrooms. And so we listened to that. And you were concerned also about the curve at Wallace Springs, right? And the traffic. And so we listened to that as well. And so the other plan that you see, the plan that we showed tonight, that put the cul-de-sac there, we did that on purpose to try and meet the needs of the neighbors who had expressed some concern about that. There's a house on Hillhaven, and I forget the gentleman's name. He actually, we exchanged some voicemails. But he also had some concerns that on Hillhaven, if we had an entrance coming out, it would be too close to his driveway and we create traffic concerns. So we eliminated that. That's where the hammerhead became. But we probably need to do a cul-de-sac as recommended by staff. So what I hope you will hear from us tonight sincerely is that our objective is always to build a community that looks great, is safe, feels good, and that the whole city is proud of. And at the same time where the economics can work. If the economics can't work, then the project can't go forward. We've looked at R10, by the way. We looked at larger sized lots. There is a tremendous amount of topography on this site. If you've ever driven up Hillhaven Road, there's about 100 feet in elevation change, at least, from the lower to the upper portion. Well, then trying to create homes and build in that topography is really challenging and becomes very expensive and ultimately gets to a point where you can't make it work. So while we looked at lower density, if we could do 300 homes and make the economics work, we would absolutely do it. We're fine with that. But right now, we can't make that pencil out. So we reduced from 500 to 421, which we presented to you all in March, to 385. And that's a range of 350 to 400. Chances are, it's gonna probably be closer to the 350 than the 385 when we finish engineering it. Because we still have to account for hills and topography. Until you get in the actual engineering of the plans, which is what Nolan and his team do, we can't say for sure. But we're leaving the outer perimeter. We want to leave trees there. We have a 30-foot buffer on Hillhaven on 21. We want to leave all the trees that we can leave there, of course, right? We're gonna plant more trees. We've talked about a pathway. We've talked to the seller about a foot pathway. We have that in our agreement with them. We want as much walking trails, natural trails in the property as we can, as long as it ultimately works within the hills and the topography. So we're kinda limited by what God gave us, but we do our best, right, with what we can do. So I hope you hear that those things are important to us. The other thing that was brought up at the community meeting was crime at Hidden Lakes. These are much bigger lots than Hidden Lakes. 7,200-plus feet is actually bigger than the standard that you see in almost every community in Charlotte or anywhere around these larger urban areas. That's true. The standard sized lot is between 5,000 and 6,000 feet in most of these larger communities. We've tried to go bigger than that. As I said, if we could do 8,000 or 10,000 square foot lots, we would, but we can't make the economics work, as plainly as I can share with you. I'm glad that you like the layout. More than anything, I hope you'll understand that we want the project to work. We want it to be safe. Being close to that community, by the way, on 21, from what we've heard from a few council members, too, is that's gonna make it better on 21. And by the way, one of the questions was brought up, why don't we do more commercial on Highway 21? We've studied that, too. We've met with several of the city council members there. There's so much topography that comes down to 21, and there's a river that runs there and a watershed there. You can't do commercial there. If we could, we would, but it doesn't lend itself to that as well. So I'm only sharing that because these were some of the comments brought up. But I do want you to know that we looked at all those things and tried to get as much feedback as we could. Appreciate, James, you reaching out to Nolan, and appreciate you guys coming in tonight. We tried to do the absolute best layout we can that'll work, that will look good, and that will be substantially better and a much improvement from Hidden Lakes and Wallace Springs around the corner. By the way, we're not having any conversations with those builders either. We don't intend to go down that pathway, for what that's worth, too. But I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, with all that discussion, then I would like to make a motion that we approve the ZC 25-04 Hillhaven zoning amendment. In addition to approving this zoning amendment, this approval is also deemed an amendment to the city's comprehensive land use plan. The changes in the conditions the planning board has taken into account pending the zoning ordinance to meet the development needs of the community, and I need my glasses, are as follows. The property is in a tier two growth area and meets the definition of complete neighborhood two, but does not meet definition of activity corridor in the 2045 development plan. However, since the proposal, proposed subdivision does match the surrounding area, which is mainly residential, and the topography near the highway is very challenging, amendment to the 2045 land development plan is acceptable. Utility services are available to the site and it is within a four-minute response time from the fire department.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
And I voted for this one, but I would like to ask the planning staff to bring back something that Mark said. It's, is it not up to us also to take our concerns and discuss them somehow? I don't want, I'm like Mark as far as continuing to see these same types of developments all the time, when maybe we could come up with something or the staff could come up with something that we...
Let's get for the record, who were the no's on that one? Mark and Joel?
No.
No.
I said I voted for this one, but I think that there's a need for...
Okay. So Mark. And, and go ahead, Joel. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure you got that.
I think there's a need for us to have an opportunity to discuss what we're talking about without having been presented with something that we have to act on at that time.
Herman, do you have any thoughts on that?
What our thinking is, before we're actually having to vote on something.
Like the long, are we talking about the long-term plans with these sort of developments?
I think one of the things we can do is look at our ordinance and maybe modify our ordinance to make it more conducive or to what, or what our thoughts are. Instead of trying, I think that does the same thing you're talking about, Joel. Instead of, we kind of make a preemptive strike at it and kind of...
Yeah. What you can do, see, the planning board is supposed to be a recommending board to city council. And they've put you in place to look at things like exactly what you're talking about. If you see things like this that you think needs to be changed, you can make recommendations to city council that we, for example, look at changing our densities or our setbacks or something like that. And it's simple to do, we just do it through a text amendment. The hard part's getting to the point where you can, you know, figuring out the wording and everybody agreeing on it. But it would just start with the board deciding, hey, we want to make a recommendation to city council that we look into some text amendments addressing densities in our zoning districts.
You know, this big question of affordability, you know, maybe this doesn't develop right now. Maybe, you know, five years down the road, then it's affordable to develop that. And you could develop it to a standard that meets what we're after, as opposed to saying, oh, we gotta, we gotta do it now, we gotta do it now, we gotta do it now. I don't know that we have to do it now. If it's not affordable to do it now, we'll be in wait.
Good discussion.
Yes.
Well, we need to carry that forward. If we really feel strongly that there's a need for a review of our text amendment or our...
If you would like, if you're all in agreement, you know, we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss it and just have a discussion about it.
Because we have to discuss it in public.
You have, yeah. Due to open, you know, open meetings law says that, you know, you have to conduct business in an open meeting where the public can attend.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Then we should have it at a time that we had two major issues coming before us that we need to...
Yeah, you want to, you know, put it on the agenda at a strategic time. Another thing you could do is you could, you could have a work session. A work session would just be a meeting, a special called meeting, that's not at the normal time. So we just have to allow enough time to meet the statute requirements for publicizing that meeting because we have to invite the public.
But would not be a public hearing at that one.
Not a public hearing. You could just have a work session and we could, you can have it, it doesn't have to happen here. It can happen, you know, in a conference room, it can happen in civic center, it can happen here. But we have to publicize and, you know, let the public know when and where it's gonna be so they can come. And you can just have open discussion amongst yourselves and talk about it, about what you would like to recommend. And now's the perfect time to do it because we're redoing our unified development code. So I would say the sooner the better if you have recommendations.
Is everyone in agreement with that for the next...
So I would suggest a work session.
Yeah. I agree with a work session.
Yeah. When would you...
I think it's great.
When would you, how soon would you like to do that?
Not tomorrow.
I think go ahead and schedule it. I mean, listen, I mean, I know you're gonna take some coordination, a month to get it scheduled, but go ahead and work toward that, from my perspective.
You wanna maybe plan to do it sometime in October, before the October meeting? So between the September, October meeting?
I think that's good.
Yeah.
Well, since I'm the one that brought it up...
Do what?
I said, since I'm the one that brought this up, I have to tell you that I'm gonna be gone for three weeks. I'll be back in time for the planning board meeting.
Okay, well...
In October. In October.
So, well, we can, you know, we can look at November. How's November for everybody?
You've got to get in front of the holiday season, but other than that, you're...
So in the meantime, what we need to do is everybody look at your ordinances and study your districts, each district, especially, well, the residential districts namely. And see, you know, make some notes about what you like and what you don't like, whether it's the setbacks or the lot size, which, you know, the lot size is gonna dictate your density. Make notes about all that stuff and get it to me. And then I can also provide you some research as well.
Mr. Rucker is teaching, so you've got to take him into account, his schedule, too.
Yeah. Well, it would be a night, we could do it, you know, in the afternoon, we could do it 6 o'clock like a regular meeting or 7 o'clock. It doesn't have to be 6. We can pick the time. But I'll send out an email to everybody and sort of coordinate it.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second now.
Second. All of them.
We have a question. Do you want to... Yeah.